Okay, the red light is on and that means it's a go. So, welcome everyone this evening, and it looks like we have a full house. So, it's kind of like Happy New Year, so welcome. Would all of you like to join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Okay, Mary, roll call, please.
Oldman.
Here.
Collins.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Kellum.
Here.
Kupczynski.
Here.
Gilbert.
Here.
All right, and first on our agenda is a special presentation we have this evening, and this is the Fire Department Civilian Awards. Chief Bradner, would you like to come forward?
Thank you, Mary. If I could have Jessica Strawn and Amanda Jurgens. Did Amanda show up? Okay, so it's not just you, Jessica. All right, well, we want to recognize two individuals in our community for saving the life of another member in our community. On September 2nd of last year, Jessica and Amanda, who were employees at Value Inn Motel, discovered an individual who was, had suffered some very serious trauma and was bleeding very significantly. And they began rendering aid to that individual, applying direct pressure to control the bleeding, and then the hotel called 911 to get us and our emergency crews en route. And because of the actions that they took that night in reaching out to another individual and applying first aid and helping out somebody else in our community, that individual's life was saved. And so, as a fire department, we wanted to take just a minute to say thank you, to recognize them for their efforts, and then to provide them with a Albany Fire Department Civilian Life Saving Award. So, the award says that it's presented to Jessica Strawn for selfless actions in providing life safety assistance on September 2nd, 2015. And with that, Jessica, we'd just like to thank you for your actions that you took.
All right. Thank you, thank you so much, Jessica. And on behalf of the Albany City Council, we're very grateful for you being able to assist like that, but that is just outstanding, so thank you. Okay, we have some scheduled business council first before we start our public hearing. And first would be, this is on page three, this would be accepting Mark Azavito's resignation from the City Tree Commission.
Move to acceptance and send a thank you letter for years of service.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And next is on page four, this one's from Chuck Leland and his resignation from the Albany Arts Commission. And you have, both of these have letters in your packet.
Same motion, same signing.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Same.
All right, okay, take care of that. Next, this is the Albany Industry Partnership Update. And Jim, were you the one gonna present? Okay, thank you.
Actually, Dave and I are going to do this jointly, and then also Josephine will be coming up in a moment, but James Merriman, M-E-R-R-Y, M-A-N, 4714, Spring Hill Drive, Albany. So, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the progress we have had on our workforce development project, specifically on the drawdown of the funds approved by the council. Our consortium of businesses, Albany Chamber of Commerce, LBCC, K-12, Lynn County, and the City of Albany have had great results already. We have classes and programs at LBCC that are aligned with the requirements of local businesses. We're filling these classes with students, and the students are being hired. And Dave will speak to this a little bit more on some of the details of that. Other areas of the state, and even out-of-state interests, have contacted us about what we are doing and the successes we are having. What is making us unique is the broad partnership that we have created and the quick results we have achieved by having all of us work together on a common goal. Other cities and counties are struggling to get all the stakeholders pulling together. You should be very proud of what you have helped make happen, and we thank you very much for that. So, I'm gonna have Dave speak for a moment, but one of the things that we, outside-interest type thing, is LBCC was invited to a national event down in San Diego here late last year, and Greg, president of LB, myself, and Ann, went down to give a talk to other community colleges in the nation. And this was, all community colleges in the nation were there, and we talked about workforce development and what we are doing here in our city. The big thing that everybody came up and talked to us about was, how were you able to pull all of this group that I just read a minute ago together, working on a common mission? And they want to know how to do that. They have parts of it, they have the business talking, or they don't have K-12, or the community college is struggling and they're not listening here, or the city isn't involved, or the county isn't involved. And so, therefore, they spin their wheels a lot. So, that part of it then became a lot of discussion at this national event down there. So, I just wanted to pass that on, that this is, has grown way more than just in the state of Oregon, what we are doing here.
So, David Becker, 3510 Northwest Glen Ridge Drive, Corvallis, Oregon. So, our partnership has gained attention at numerous state-level entities and from national organizations as well, specifically, as Jim has said, a model to follow. The Career Technical Education Leaders Conference, which is made up of deans from all the Oregon community colleges, has requested this partnership model be presented at the next quarterly meeting in February. The Western Business Education Association has also requested a presentation for February 12th. We have presented and toured local industries, specifically CELMET, and Rick Kenyon's here tonight, with NC3, the National Coalition of Certification Centers, and have been invited to participate in the February 18th NC3 National Signing Day. That will provide a select number of recruited students with a reserved guaranteed spot in one of our manufacturing programs. This event mimics many of the details you would see as part of a College Football National Signing Day, ceremony, publicity award, and giveaways. You'll be receiving an invite to this event next week. Additionally, our partnership with GAPS has been more engaged in regional impact. As an example, South Albany High School has started an effort in implementing an employability index, a number for each student along with their GPA on a scale of one to five, that measures the soft skills of attendance, teamwork, and communication. Brent Belleville has been called on a couple of times this year to present to all of our 14 regional high schools, and now other high schools in the area are adopting this best practice that leads to employability. At the core of this model is our partnership with industry, meeting the workforce needs and goal of economic development within the area. An example is the Albany site opening of H3O Headquarters, a welding and fabrication company. We've, Councilman Kellum is aware of that company. While we lost one of our best welding instructors to H3O, Fred Stewie, we were able to replace him and hire Mark Rose, who left a welding and fabrication job that paid almost twice the salary that we currently pay him at LBCC. He cited as justification the work done in partnership with you and local business. "The allocation of resource meant a commitment, not just words," as he put it. Across the state, one of the problem areas is hiring qualified CTE full-time faculty. The credibility, commitment, and support that has been exemplified with this partnership has been a positive factor in overcoming this obstacle for us at LBCC. It's also led to new full-time hiring in our machine tool program. So, in summary, your support and the allocation of these resources has done more than just allow us the ability to procure needed modern training equipment. It has been, as we used to say in a previous job I had, a force multiplier. You've given credibility, validity, and trust in our programs that they will produce the workforce needed in local business, and that students who complete will be hired in a high-wage, high-demand job that has purpose and meaning. We've seen an increase in our Cooperative Work Experience Program opportunities. Welding and machine tool students have been placed at local Albany business sites with paid internships, at some sites for the first time. We've also seen second-year students hired during the fall term this year, with accommodations made to work around the program class schedule to ensure completion of their respective degree. All these positive effects are a result of your decision, and the demonstrated public support is evidenced by putting much-needed resources towards our programs. As I stated before, but it needs to be said again, it's more than just about the new equipment, it's much more, and we see it every day when we work at LBCC, and for that, we're thankful to you for that.
So, the economic development funds are part of a larger workforce development goal, and I would like to give you an update on that bigger picture, and then Dave will discuss the funds that you granted the award. As you recall, many of the local businesses pooled our money to hire a workforce development director, Josephine Fleetwood, who's here tonight, develop a marketing plan, and create a sales strategy to make sure local students, teachers, counselors, parents, and unemployed workers knew of the demand for employees in manufacturing companies in our area. We started the sales pitch with the high schools, but are now also moving into middle schools. We have named the program Pipeline, created a video, a webpage, flyers, handouts for the different target audiences, and put together many tours of businesses and LBCC for teachers, counselors, students. And what I'd like to do now is have Josephine Fleetwood come up and give you a brief introduction to the website that's out there that's being used, and a short little video that's happening.
I have our, some of our marketing materials all started over here. So, Josephine Fleetwood, F-L-E-T-W-O-D, 26900, Corvallis. Thank you for inviting us here tonight, and the opportunity to talk about the pipeline program, amazing partnerships that you have going on in our community. So, this is a video that was created that you have been showcasing to communities, schools, teachers, and a lot of private people. And I'm gonna, it's just a short, four-minute video, so I'm gonna go ahead and get started.
Great job, you're out there, lots of them. Most companies are going to add their thousand hired employees in the next five years, and most of the good jobs in the economy don't require a full-time degree, or four years of all debt. You need to water to advance training, especially if you're close to your end of the quarter. What you need to do is get into the pipeline. I'm trying to figure out whether you can write back to school, if you have a working job, you're writing.
I have one day-to-day, write-down project. I point out my guys, how much less hours per day are, I'm getting on my calendar, counting down. I love what I do for a living, very rewarding, something every day, and it's a different set of problems to solve. The best part is I'm not doing repetitive work, I don't have to, I'm working as a team, as a group, I don't have to do too much every day.
What I do for my job, I x-ray. They're working here, and I realize that this is, I'm a career employee, but I am totally human every single day, so I'm gonna apply it to what I do today, and...
I've partnered with the people who get me ready for... Fast track success to a good job.
My hands, but I didn't exactly know where to... My skills aren't, that's what we're working here, and I've only grown since then.
Many women, I believe...
More opportunities to move forward, whether that be welding, or machine, or engineering, seeing all three go through at this particular...
Great jobs, great pay, fast track training. This is the pipeline to a great start.
So, this is...
...more progress, we're always adding to it, trying to keep it active and live, so that... The programs that are available, the... Marketing materials that you were given are something that we distribute to the schools. And then, there's a list of all the different activities and programs that were, that we have been involved with and that we're going to be promoting. One of the ones that I'm really excited about, as you saw the women that were involved in the video, is we are doing specifically a women in manufacturing event with LBCC as a partner in the spring. We held a very large-scale Manufacturing Day event, that's a nationwide event that's happening. They had 160 students, five school districts, and there was probably 10 girls total. So, we recognize that this is something that we want to be promoting to women as well and girls. And then, this summer, we're also hosting the very first middle school manufacturing camp at LBCC. That's something that's happening nationwide as well. Dave Becker wrote a grant, and we got some funding to do that. Albany Public School Foundation is also supporting it as well, so just a couple upcoming initiatives that are, a lot of partnerships and new ideas.
So, at LBCC, this has led to full classrooms in the entry-level programs that were developed with many businesses. Some of these programs are in welding, fabricating, mechatronics, design, and other coursework classes like reading, math, and writing. So, we are pleased to report that these students are getting hired, as Dave mentioned, as they come out of the programs, some even before they have finished. LBCC is moving forward on their expansion plans with the bond, which is opening up the space to install our specific pieces of equipment necessary to start the education of students in the more advanced programs, the reason for the economic development funds that we asked you for. So, Dave can go over where we're at on those economic development funds and where we're headed in the near future.
So, we've been working closely with the city, specifically Kate Porsche, in the allocation of the funding. Originally, when we came before you, we had asked for approximately $700,000 to be made available for this past summer, with the balance to be available during fall of '16. This timeline, this timeline has slid until this term, and we are in process of, right now, of allocating part of the $700,000 over the next few months for major items that will take some time to be manufactured and made, specifically the non-destructive test immersion tank, which we originally had down at an estimate of $447,000. So, we are in the process to purchase this piece of equipment, just finished the notification advertisement of our intention. The good news is, we have a quote for $384,000, and this also includes training, setup, testing, maintenance for over a year at a savings of approximately $60,000. So, as we await design and bidding finalization on the repurpose of our program buildings that will dictate the timing of the majority of the cash flow, we are mindful of the flexibility needed by the city to leverage these resources for other economic development purposes in the near term, and then backfilling the resources for allocation to procure the equipment. So, we'll continue our communication with Kate as we progress on the repurpose design. However, at this time, the allocation of the $700,000 between now and June 2016 is anticipated as phase one of the cash flow. The second phase of the cash flow would start at the earliest in September of 2016 and be spread over the remaining of the year into 2017. I just want to add to that, that would be the earliest. There's several projects that are ongoing, all related to one another, but not all on the LBCC campus, and it's much more complex, and we'd be here for about three hours if I tried to explain all the moving parts to that. So, I'll stop there.
So, finally, we'd like to know if the city council would be interested in having some tours of the local high schools, LBCC, businesses, to see the great things that are happening, and to be able to continue to grow the connection between all of us. We would be glad to set these up and have you come through as a group at any or all of these, or maybe spread out over multiple visits, but we wanted to offer that so that you can see what is going on out here in our community. So, thank you for your time and your continuing support, and if any of you have any questions for myself, Dave, or Josephine?
I think Rich had one.
Actually, I had a request. You said women belong in manufacturing, and I say, oh heck yes. One thing that might be advantageous is to include a woman TIG welding. Women do incredible TIG welding. I mean, on average, women are better than men because of, you know, close dexterity. So, I mean, it's something that they would excel at.
Other questions?
Not a question, but I'd just like to thank Jim, Dave, and everybody's been involved in this process, because it really goes back several years, when there's been a need to find, people have sat down and put their individual issues aside and said, what's our common purpose? And that didn't happen overnight, and it didn't happen over a cup of coffee. There was a lot of meetings, a lot of discussion, a lot of take and give, and I think we're very fortunate to have a group that came together with that vision, and that we were extremely fortunate to have the funds available to jumpstart this, because the return is in the long term. This is not an instantaneous return for our community, but as one of the slides said, we're looking at 1,000 jobs over five years. You go to any community in this state or this nation, and you want to bring 1,000 jobs to their community, they're bending over backwards to try to find, how do they do that, how do they make it happen? And we did it through a homegrown process, and I don't think anybody else I've ever heard of has done that, and I'm really pleased that this has become a model for other folks. Everything we're hearing at the national level is, four-year college degrees are good for the curriculums that they're in, but not everybody's designed for a four-year curriculum. And if we're gonna get back into the manufacturing that we want to be in, this is the track we have to be on. I applaud the school district, the college, the leadership in the community, because it's a great jumpstart and takes a lot of effort, and there's a lot of effort down the road. So, thanks to all of you.
Yep, well said, so we really appreciate it. And any questions down here?
Thank you.
So, also let us know about setting up a time for taking that tour, so we'll get something scheduled.
We'll do that, work with Wes and his group.
Yeah, yeah, and it's very encouraging to hear that this is becoming a model, and other states are hearing about it too, so that's wonderful, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, next on the agenda is a couple of public hearings, and, so, bear with me, folks, this one will be for our police station and fire station, and I have a script to have to read here first, so it takes a little couple minutes, but this is something that we have to follow by state law. Okay, so, this is to conduct a quasi-judicial public hearing. On tonight's agenda is a quasi-judicial public hearing regarding planning file VC-0215, CU-0715, and RL-1015. The applicant is the City of Albany. I call to order this public meeting at 7:40 PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the meeting recorder. And do any members of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact? I think I have had, probably over the course of time, when it looks like we were citing for this location, I have had, you know, comments of, you know, several residents kind of bringing up about the location, and, but I think pretty much all of it's been, was conveyed, and at the neighborhood meeting that took place, and I was also at that neighborhood meeting. Do any members wish to report a side visit? I think all of us have driven by, yeah, so. And do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any counselor in this hearing and decision? So, for all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Any continuance or extension of the record requested by the applicant shall result in a corresponding extension to the 120-day limit. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. So, at this time, I'll call for the staff report, Planner David Martino.
Hello, I'm David Martino, I'm a planner here at the City of Albany. The first hearing tonight is about the new Albany Police Station. Which involves three land use applications, the first is a street and right-of-way vacation, then there's a conditional use and a replat. Because this project involves a street and drainage right-of-way vacation, it requires two public hearings, one at the Planning Commission and then one at City Council. The proposed use for the property at 2600 Pacific Boulevard Southwest is the new police headquarters to serve the residents of Albany. The development will include 101 onsite parking spaces, together with landscaping around all sides of the building, with buffering and screening consisting of trees, shrubs, and an eight-foot block wall on the western side of the property to screen the development from adjoining residences. The property is zoned office professional and residential single-family RS5. Properties to the north and south of the site are zoned OP and are presently developed with medical office and other commercial uses. The properties across Pacific Boulevard to the east are zoned light industrial, and the property to the west and southwest are zoned residential single-family RS6.5, except for a small pocket of residential medium-density zoning to the west. That property contains six condominium units. So, development of the new police... all sides of the building, with buffering and screening consisting of trees, shrubs, and an eight-foot block wall on the western side of the property to screen the development from adjoining residences. The property is zoned office professional and residential single-family RS5. Properties to the north and south of the site are zoned OP and are presently developed with medical office and other commercial uses. The properties across Pacific Boulevard to the east are zoned light industrial and the property to the west and southwest are zoned residential single-family RS6.5, except for a small pocket of residential medium-density zoning to the west. That property contains six condominium units. So development of the new police station is contingent upon the vacation of the abutting portion of Voletta Street Southwest where it bisects the site and the south half of the Cathy Creek right-of-way abutting the site to the north. The city will retain utility easements over the entire length of both the vacated Voletta Street and the Cathy Creek drainage channel. These proposed vacations meet all vacation review criteria. Approval of both vacations are in the form of a revised ordinance that we ask you to consider this evening. An emergency clause in the ordinance has been requested for council's consideration. Without it, there would be significant impacts to the project that would cause a delay of four to six weeks in starting the bidding process. City Engineer Stacy Bel Castro can address this in more detail following this presentation. So the second application with the new police station is for a conditional use. Community service uses such as public safety facilities are permitted through the conditional use process in both the office professional and in the RS5 zoning districts. The new police station will be a 24-hour operation in a building containing office and public safety institutional uses. The proposed building will be two stories with a maximum height of 39 feet. Parapet walls are proposed on the roof that screen the mechanical equipment on the roof. The building will meet commercial and institutional design standards through the use of architectural features such as ground-level transparency, varying building materials featuring masonry veneer, structural masonry, and metal panel walls. The size of the lot and the orientation of the development towards the east side of the property facing Pacific Boulevard adequately mitigate size and scale. Site plans show a combination of landscape buffer and screening and ample building setbacks to protect neighboring properties on all sides, including the residential uses to the south and the west. So here you'll see that the building will be set back 85 feet from the RS5 zoning district line and then over 246 feet from the nearest residences to the west. There will be one new driveway to Pacific Boulevard along the front edge of the site. That driveway will be the primary access point for the police station. Because Pacific Boulevard is part of the state highway system, Oregon Department of Transportation needs to approve the construction of the new driveway. The development will also dedicate public right-of-way and construct a cul-de-sac bulb and two driveways on the south boundary of the site at the end of Voletta Street, both of which will provide secondary access. The police property is in a part of town where wetland inventories were not studied. Therefore, the city hired a wetlands consultant to determine the presence of wetlands and delineate their boundaries on the site. Development can proceed in accordance with Oregon Department of State lands and U.S. Army Corps of Engineers permitting and mitigation requirements. There are no other local special purpose districts on this site to consider. So this project meets all of the conditional use criteria. The third land use application of the three involves a replat to combine two parcels, along with the vacated portions of Voletta Street and Cathy Creek, into one parcel under the same ownership. The proposed development would utilize the entire site and would also dedicate the Voletta Street cul-de-sac bulb. Adjoining land is currently developed and has access to existing rights-of-way. Combining two parcels into one lot totaling three and three-quarters acres allows for the construction of the proposed police station. This replat meets all applicable review criteria. So the following sets of review criteria were used in the evaluation of the proposed police station, beginning with the vacation criteria, which was found in Section 2.630 of the Albany Development Code. Conditional use criteria is found in Section 2.250 of the Development Code. And tentative replat review criteria are contained in the Section 11.180 of the Albany Development Code. So in summary, the staff report reviews and evaluates the consolidated street vacation, conditional use, and replat application submitted by McKenzie on behalf of the City of Albany Police Department for conformance with the Albany Development Code. As proposed and conditioned, the application for a street vacation, conditional use review, and replat to develop a new police station satisfies all of the applicable review criteria as outlined in the report. Therefore, staff and the Planning Commission recommends that city council adopt a vacation ordinance and approve the development with all proposed conditions. Do you have any questions of me at this time?
Okay, any councils have any questions? No? Okay. Is that it? Right now? All right. Okay, so we will now take testimony, well, we just got it from the applicant. So that one's done. We will now take public testimony, first from those in favor of the applications, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally from anyone who is neutral. As I, oh, is Stacy coming up?
She's the owner's rep.
Oh, she is, okay.
She and her escort.
All right. So hold off on that testimony yet, so. Sorry, when I saw David, I kept thinking, but the city, it's still the applicant. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I first would like to thank everybody that's worked on this project. We spent a lot of meetings and a lot of hours to get to the point that we are right now. Currently, we are in what we call Phase Two of the project. So Phase One was the pre-development up to the bond. Phase Two is the process we're in now, and then Phase Three is construction. Currently, we have just received the 90% plans for the Albany Police Department. We'll receive the 90% cost estimate in a couple of weeks and then we'll, everything that we've seen so far puts us within budget. And we are scheduled to go to bid sometime towards the end of February.
All right, so, good evening. I'll continue where Chief Latanzio left off. To start, I wanted to just provide some additional key milestones for the schedule. As Chief Latanzio said, we did just recently receive the 90% plan, so we will be reviewing the 90% cost estimate at the end of this month. In February, we will be issuing public notice to pre-qualify general contractors that want to submit bids for the project. Also in February, there's a plan that the draw-in set for building permits will be submitted to the Building Department. Bidding for construction is planned to take place between April and May of this year and then currently, construction or groundbreaking for the project is scheduled to start the first week of July. The construction window's roughly 12, 13 months, so substantial completion is scheduled for June 2017. As mentioned by Planner David Martino, staff is requesting that the emergency clause be included with the ordinance. The reason we're doing this, because without it, there is the potential to have some pretty significant impacts to the project's schedule. Not including the emergency clause in the ordinance could delay issuance of the notice of decision by up to six weeks. Impacts to schedule is going to impact when bidding happens, it'll impact when construction happens, so we are recommending the clause to avoid this. Delaying construction and bidding has the potential to increase the cost for the project.
Okay, questions? All right. Okay. Are we ready now, David? Yeah. Okay. All right. So I will repeat again, so we will now take public testimony, first from those in favor of the applications, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally from anyone who is neutral. As I recognize you, please come to the podium, state your full name and address, spell your last name, and make any comments you may have for the council's consideration. This has been set up for Planning Commission. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then present it to the recorder. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in support of the application? Okay, not seeing anyone. And is there anyone that, a member of the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? We had two people that signed up. One person didn't state and the other one, Tom, was on other. So is there anyone in opposition? Okay, so then I will call up Tom Cordier. You wanted to speak on other.
Thomas E. Cordier, 2240 Northwest Park Terrace in Albany. Spell the last name, C-O-R-D-I-E-R. The reason I checked other is because I'm generally in favor of the project. But I have four bullet points here that I'd like to talk about. And first of all, I want to thank David and Ron for helping me try to understand the process and where to find the information that I needed to evaluate as part of this hearing. And one of the things I'm going to ask David to do, if you could put the site plan map back on the screen, I'd appreciate that. The first bullet point is a question about zoning. That question about the zoning of this parcel was brought up months and months and months ago with our Public Safety Facilities Review Committee. And we were told over and over and over again, you don't have to worry about that. We don't have to do anything. The site is okay and you don't have to do anything. Well, here we are with a hearing. The office professional zoning districts must get a conditional use permit to allow the police department to be used as a community service category. When our committee toured the APD building, the existing building, we were told that the police department wanted its own jail. And I recall that because I objected during the meeting as we toured the facility and said, it seems to me that a jail at the police department wouldn't be necessary because the county either was or had just passed the bond that opened all of the beds of the jail. So we don't have a shortage of jail spaces. And then we were told, well, we need a secure place for drunks to dry out rather than booking them into the jail and having them released within 24 hours because that's costly for the city, we were told, because there's some arrangement about how many beds the city pays for and if you book them into the jail, you're wasting your money because they're just going to get out the next day. And so the OP parcel, Office Professional parcel, does not allow jails or detention facilities in the area. Okay? Can't have them. In Chief Latanzio's neighborhood meetings, he read to whoever was present, said that, he specified that the building is not a jail. There are five temporary holding cells, three for adults and two for juveniles, which gives the staff an area to continue investigations if needed. The majority of people that are arrested will be taken into custody in Lynn County Jail. And so the Albany Development Code, Section 22 dot 23, says jail and detention facilities detain or incarcerate persons while being processed for arrest or detention by law enforcement. That's the definition by our Development Code. Inmates and detainees are under 24-hour surveillance or supervision by sworn officers except on approved leave. And so what I'm objecting to is that conditional use permit doesn't give, doesn't ask for permission to run a detention facility. And the reason, I guess, is because we're going to play the word game of the temporary holding cell. And that seems to me to be ridiculous. We're going for a conditional use permit, why don't we disclose? I mean, when I, I've talked to some of the staff and my understanding, I may be wrong, my understanding is that this is going to be a detention facility. We're going to detain people, we're going to investigate people. And so Albany Development Code does not have a definition for a temporary holding cell. So I don't know what the rules are that are going to govern those cells. How, I've heard, well, we're only going to hold people for four hours there. Well, is that true? I don't know. How long are we going to detain them there? Are they going to have medical care? If they're, I mean, I don't know what the requirements are. And so what I'm asking for is to delay this process until we can get a definition into the code of what a temporary holding cell is so that we'll know how it's being operated. And I think that's being, that would be an honest part of the application for a conditional use permit. So I'm asking you to take that into your consideration so that we know exactly what's going to be going on there because the application doesn't deal with this subject at all. There's no written document that deals with the cells. And so because there's no definition, I don't know what they're going to be used for, and I would ask you to evaluate that and describe whether there's food available or medical attention or video recordings or, I mean, there may be, I may be totally wrong. There may be a state standard for temporary holding cells. I just know that our Development Code doesn't have one. And so if there is one, I'd like to see that and I'd like to see that put into the application. My next bullet has to do with the traffic. And I don't have a pointer. Anybody got a long pencil? I don't know how to do that. Anybody got a laser deal? I don't, I've never had.
You can use the arrow on the mouse.
Pardon me?
On the mouse, you can just move it over the page.
Oh, on the mouse. See, I don't know wireless.
On these TV screens.
Yeah, okay. So there it is. So how do I get rid of that thing?
Just click.
Okay. Here's the entrance and exit on 99. And there's a gate, a sliding gate under footnote 18, right across here. What happened to my, I sneezed or something. Oh, I know, I'm moving that, but my paper's moving, sorry. There's a gate that comes across here and my understanding is that the plan is for police employees to enter the space, coming in here and turning right directly through that, I suppose, keypad gate to come to the secure area parking over in here. Okay? And that patrol cars would even, police department employees, not just patrol car, but that employees will be using that same exit entrance. but that employees will be using that same exit entrance. And that this gate, this sliding gate at the end of the cul-de-sac will be locked. And that there's no general access through that cul-de-sac from Woletta Street, in and out along that north gate. That's my understanding. Nothing in the written record describes that, okay? But that's my understanding. So I would ask you to put that in the document, that that gate is to remain locked unless it's an emergency or whatever. I don't, you can use whatever language you want. But then when visitors come, civilians come, if I can say it that way, public people come into the site, if they come in off 99, right there, they would generally turn left and use the public parking in the front of the building. And they may very well, they can decide then whether they want to go back out that way onto 99 or whether they want to come this way into the cul-de-sac and out Woletta. Okay? The reason I bring this up is because in the study on page five of the staff report dated November 15th of last year, the traffic study, I don't know what it amounted to, but the traffic study says there's about 500 trips a day. And it's not split between Albany Police Employees or general public trips. There's no distinction between that. So what I know is that the south end of Woletta is really crowded during the day. Those professional plazas are, it's a heavy-used parking lot. And I would not want to see a lot of traffic coming south out of the police lot. Because the bank, if you recall, the bank, Credit Union is right on the corner. There are three or four professional buildings there. We go there, I don't know, once a month, and it's always hard to find parking there, and parking is not slanted. It's all, so it's a very narrow road. And so I don't know, David indicated to me that with a traffic study, they don't generally distinguish between types of cars or whatever. But if there's 500 trips, and I'm making the assumption that a trip is defined by once through the gate, and two trips is in and out. Okay? I'm assuming that. But with 500 trips a day, I don't know how many are going to be coming down Woletta Street. And it's a crowded street. And so if the study could distinguish between Albany Police Department employees that will generally, I think, be maybe required by the chief to use the 99 entrance and exit, then there's only the public which would, who would come south and then enter the cul-de-sac from the east. But I don't know that information. So I would ask you to get that information and sort it out so that you know what is really going to be expected to come into that little bitty crowded street called Woletta. So that's the second one. I hesitate to bring this to you, but I feel I must. When we talked about ex parte communication, this whole process, to me, of buying the land, citing the building, Public Safety Committee, the interface between that committee, all of that is ex parte. And so to me, the idea that you guys would be unbiased in that decision process is kind of like thinking about the Supreme Court of Oregon saying, "Yeah, they would agree with the legislature to cut their pensions." I mean, they threw that out in a heartbeat because that affects them. And so I don't know how you can be an objective party in making the determination. Be that as it may, I didn't object to your request when you opened the meeting, and so I stand corrected for bringing it up now, I guess. But it just, this ex parte communication is, to me, is a joke. I mean, it makes no sense. And the last bullet is, I'm requesting that the record remain open so that the two issues, meaning the temporary holding cell definition and how it's going to be operated, that that be determined and that the definition of what that cell is defined and also that the issue of getting it into the conditional permit that actually allows you to do that. Because now, right now, it's not in the conditional use, not in there anyplace. So I would ask you to look at that and also this traffic thing and have the record remain open until those things. Other than those few bullets, I'm in favor of proceeding. Any questions?
All right. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, who signed up, and I apologize, I cannot read the last name, but it's Darrell and it starts with a P.
Pepper.
Pepper. Oh, Darrell Pepper, former police chief's. Sorry, I couldn't read your writing.
The two letters that I received inviting me to the meeting here.
So Darrell.
No, just Pepper.
Oh, Pepper. So you'll need to state it in the microphone so the tape recorder picks it up and your address.
I ask you to bear with me. I have not been well.
Sorry.
Darrell Pepper, 3200 Southeast Davidson, Albany, 40 years. This is my 416th council meeting that I have attended. And there's one person here that's got that doubled at least, and I think he's a glutton for punishment. I might answer some questions about the jail situation. Back when the people were put in behind the slammers down at City Hall, they changed the state law. And the state law required that people who were being detained had to have a certain caloric intake and that sort of thing. At that time, we bought breakfast, lunch, and dinner from a restaurant next door. And in order to meet the requirement, we, two weeks, we kept meticulous records on everything that was sealed or served in the jail. I took that information to the hospital and their dietitian evaluated it and said everything was fine except they weren't getting enough vitamin C. So we got a jar of that imitation orange juice, and we were in good stead. Then they changed the law again and required that they had to have a sea-flesh inspection in the jail every 15 minutes, and that would require an officer to be in the building all the time. So I made arrangements with the Lynn County Sheriff's Office. They were very helpful with that. There are two general classes of people that go to jail. There's those that are municipal violators and those that are state violators. The city does not pay for it well directly, doesn't pay for the state violators, but they had to pay for the city violators or city offenders or whatever you wanted to call them. So, and that operated all the way through. At the time that the station, police station was built on Jackson Street, it worked out very handily for us because we were just a walk across the parking lot. And we, I don't know if, maybe somebody forgot to charge us. I don't recall how that worked. But at any rate, that's how we got to that point. And I was surprised that, I think we paid a per diem for the people that were there. If they were, I don't, if they were there for at least 24 hours or less than 24 hours, there was a fixed fee. Have to talk to the sheriff about them. Very helpful, very helpful. Okay. While I was sitting there, Nick, all I could do was think Marv had been recreated. That's sort of an inside joke, but he caught it. I'm here not to, not concerned about the zoning. My concern is about the way things sort of started out, and I haven't been impressed. The property that we're concerned with here today was purchased in '09. And when I started looking at, see what was, consideration was, I thought that the levy was going to be to pay for the continuation of construction of the new jail. That new jail came into effect, or not jail, not altogether, I guess, that the new building was a result of manipulation with City Hall. And the City Hall was in the old post office. Then they rented space where Payless used to be, and that's going to leave some people out because that's been some time ago. And the police department was left in the post office. Then there was some effort made or concern about getting on with the new City Hall, and they had to find a place to put the police laddies. So they used money on hand, didn't have to go for a levy. And at that time, the county was building a jail out on Jackson Street. And they worked in an agreement so they would use the same construction people and design people and all, and they hired a concern named Ketchel C.E.M. And they started at the very first part of the process in working with the two agencies. And these people specialize in custodial facilities and police stations. And it was really a wonderful experience because their team came and in the planning process, they made suggestions that resulted in their incorporation and building a facility that was recognized throughout the state of Oregon as one of the best police facilities that there was. But it wasn't built out. We had 15 lockers in excess of the number of employees we had at that time. And that was when there was about 28 to 100,000. And so we knew that we were going to have to go on and build out and provide for, one of the two kinds of things that takes up space in a police department is their locker facilities and property facilities, property storage. And that's probably one of the most demanding areas there is. Because you have to be able to testify that your property that you have taken as evidence has been kept under lock and key and only accessed by people that are authorized and any, to assure that there's been no manipulation of the evidence. So that, I haven't, I don't know what space was going to be required. In fact, I hardly remember. If it wasn't for Pepper on the envelope, I might not remember who I am. But at any rate, so the plan was to, when money became available, to build out the program. I was operating under the assumption that the levy and all was going to be to build that out. And that then it came to my attention through some of my former employees that that was the property was a marsh. And I was surprised, I hadn't been in that part of town. But at any rate, I was concerned about that, and I talked to a geotech that I'm acquainted with and asked him about what determines wetland. And he said, "Well, if you walk out across there and you get water on your wingtips, it's wetland." But that's sort of interesting, though. This property was purchased without any consideration of its wetland status. In fact, that information didn't come through until November of '15. And then the also of concern and part of my concern is the traffic access. The, it's rated as, I got more paper than I need here. Oh, boy. The daily traffic count across there is, oh, that's the wrong one. Oh, boy. There it is. And that's easy to get that information. 18,500 cars go up and down or travel on what is known as the Albany Junction City Highway Number 58. And I hadn't thought about that until I remembered when I used to travel Albany Junction City Highway 58 because there wasn't any I-5. And then there's another compilation where there's one period of time, and they didn't tell me when that was, that 10% of it operates, I think that's probably would be between four and six in the afternoon where the heavy traffic thing is. But the other part of it that concerns me about that highway is that it's a five-lane highway with two lanes, two north, two south, and one in the middle. And then another compounder with that is the fact that it's a 45 miles an hour speed limit across there. And there's a long section of road there where there's no interruption with lights lights and all. So that means probably most of the people have attained that 45 miles an hour. So, the officers coming up and getting onto the freeway, onto the highway, don't have a really good chance to, to see what's coming or ability to get onto the, the highway safely. If it's southbound, that's coming out of the, out of the area and going south, that's pretty easy to make, make the turn. But every time that you cross a traffic lane marker is, is a, a compounder of potential accidents. So that's, that is, that is a concern to me because I care about police officers. While I was in service in Albany, I had three officers pretty seriously hurt in traffic accidents and three shot. And it's, the hardest duty I ever did was to talk to the family. So that, that's, that's my concern there as far as being able to get safely onto the, onto the highway. I have a pile of stuff here that I could go on and dribble with, but I think you've had enough of that. And the other concern I have is, well, it's two concerns. Part of, part of how you travel through Albany is controlled by two companies. And they're both railroads. To get into certain areas of Albany, you might frequently be plugged up, especially if you use Queen, you'd be plugged up with the switching that takes care of, at that location. In order to get, say if there's something occurs out on, on Queen Avenue, maybe Queen and Gary, and you need to get there, you first have to get into a northbound lane and get up there. And then at Queen, you'll find that that's usually backed up. I, I've been averaging every, when I go up that way, averaging at least five cars ahead of you to get through the intersection. That's getting through the light. And then if you wanted to turn on the Queen, you've got the railroad to be involved with. If you go down and intend to go across 34th Avenue, you have two railroads there. Freight trains go through about 85 cars at a time. And they go on an unscheduled basis and they move right along. And then the Union Pacific, it goes through on schedule. And they aren't really as, in comparison, they're, they're not, they're not as much of a hazard along the way. But if you look about crossing railroad tracks through the rest of the town, you have Queen and Main and Gary and Davidson and clear out by the Corporation Yard, there's, I think, another crossing that you have to contend with. And that's, that's a concern. At the location the station's at now, it's easy to get onto the street and you can get most any place in town. If you want to get on the other side of the railroad track going north, it just makes the connection and goes back around onto Pacific and, and then down Lyons and you're home free. So, there maybe can be some kind of an arrangement made so there's some kind of a communication that will tell when the line's going to be blocked or the, there'll, there'll be delays. That I, I don't know of any place where they've come up with that, but that is the concern. One of the concerns is with, with, with the fire department, they have their equipment stationed around different parts of town and they're, at their, there's, there's one on 34th and out on Three Lakes Road and one in North Albany. So, the equipment is placed out there and they have, when they get a call, the quickest ones goes quickly. Then the, the police people, they have what they used to, we used to call patrols. And they said that there were three people working and they divided the town in thirds and let them roam around and, and all. Back in 1987, I had a brainstorm that we should try to use the presence of a police vehicle or a police officer in an area where there's more trouble than other parts of town. So, we set up something I called a directed patrol. I divided the city into a number of grids. Each grid had a number to it. And when a report was generated, the, that number went on to the report. And we took the reports as they came in and tried to do it in relationship to time too and made a, made a map for the watch that was taking place at the time and, or to take place. And the officer was directed to stay within a small confine in this area where the activity was going on. If there was a call that he needed to go someplace else, that's fine. But every time that he spent, he might, you know, he might go past a place two or three times a day. And, and I think we, we recognized that there was some, some reduction of activities in those areas. I was, was pleased to, not too long ago, to see that, oh, here, I'm going to expose my ignorance again, Chief Latanzio, is that right?
Tanzio.
Is that close?
Close.
Okay. I'm not very good with the Irish thing. But he, I don't know what he calls what he, he has his people doing, but he has the benefit of, of a computer system so they can generate that instead of doing sort of a tic-tac-toe arrangement along the way. So, I was, I was pleased to see, see that there's, there's some new thought in the Police Department.
Thank you.
I met him once and I, I can't remember names any, I don't have to anymore. Remember faces, I've seen him in the post office all the time. But at, but at any rate, I, I am exposed to a lot of the old timers around town and I've heard nothing but good reports about him.
Wonderful.
And with, with his, coming up with, with an innovative, an innovative personnel management area, I, I'm, I'm really, really pleased. We had 10 years where we didn't have that and then some.
Wonderful. Thank you.
My last thing that'll, well, burden, burden you with, I guess, or whatever. I don't know how many of you have been out to the, the site and, oh, has everybody been out there, walked around? Anybody may, well, okay, fess up. How many haven't been out there to walk around?
Actually, technically, technically for land use hearings, we're not supposed to. So, but we've all driven by.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But it's, and you can't tell from the, up there, at, at the south end of, of the property, the property is six feet below grade of the, of the highway. And at the north end, it's about 12 feet below grade. And of course, you're not going to get too far over there, you get wet. But at any rate, when the, when the driveway goes up, it's on an angle of about 7%. And it, that also confuses the visual line of oncoming traffic. So, I don't know what you're going to do about that. I know what you could have done about it was to finish out the Jefferson Street Station and not mess with the smoke. My last and as important thing on my mind is that, is the neighborhood. There, if you come off the highway at the light and, and go down and turn on Willetta Street and then drive over to where the city property takes, takes off, that's two tenths of a mile. And along that two tenths of a mile, there are nine owner occupied residents. And these people, from my observation and what I've heard, make an effort to keep their vehicles off the street if they can because there's concern about the width of the street and, and traffic and all. And so, if they don't park on their, their driveway, they'll park, they'll limit their parking to one place or to one side of the street. So, there's always an extra travel lane along the way. I, I live in a, I live on a, on a street that's similar to that. And over the 40 years I've been there, there's been about 28 kids have grown to maturity. They haven't been run over or anything like that, or there's been no threatening problems with, with the traffic. Most recently, we've got a school bus that goes down that street and you can tell what time of day it is, but you can hear that thing roaring past. But the rest of the time, the neighbors are out talking with each other, helping each other, and it's, it's, it's a neighborhood. And that's a valuable thing because if there's a problem, it's taken care of locally. So, I don't know how you're going to limit any traffic on Willetta Street, but just to be aware of it. I can understand there might be some problems with the parking lot at night, but that's a, you know, unless you're Donald Trump, you don't control the hemispheres and the lights and all. And, but at any rate, I'd, I'd encourage them to, if there's a problem, I'm sure if they talk with the chief, they might not get the answer they want, but they'll at least be heard.
Okay. All right.
And that's, that's the truth and let's stick with it.
Great.
And you've been spared a number of other things that probably seem to be trivia to some people.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Daryl. Yeah. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this application? Okay. Oh, yes.
I'm not really going to come up there, but I'll tell you, my name is Joanne Maddie.
Joanne, we have to have it. The tape has to pick you up, sorry. Kind of brings back memories. Should bring back memories for you. Yeah.
Anyway, I feel like a midget. Okay.
You only need to state your name and spell your last name.
Yes, Joanne Maddie.
And your address.
And I live on 29th, which is going to be impacted. I just moved there in September.
Oh, okay.
And I'm very happy to be there. And I'm really not opposed to this, but you do need to know a couple of things. Okay? The people, and I really applaud you very much for the traffic and so on and so forth, Chief Pepper, because there is a real concern on Willetta that he just covered. That street is narrow. It's not your normal street that goes down 29th Street where the light is. This is a very small street. And if you park your cars, if you have the cars going here and the cars going here, like you do because the Professional Plaza is right here, there is not a fire truck or a ambulance and it's going to be very hard. You cannot get down that street. You're going to go, it's, and they won't be moving fast. Okay. The other thing is, he was absolutely right about the trains and I don't know how you're going to get out of there. I, that's all I'm going to say about that because it's a real concern. I don't even use Queen Street. The, the trains are so bad and we hear that in our backyards all the time, but I knew that when I moved in. So, and I chose this house because of the location and the property values and the resale of the future. But I am concerned about the bright lights, you know, they're going to put the bright lights on the parking lot. And some of those people live right there and they were concerned about, you know, shining those lights right into their bedroom and in, from the parking lot. And the noise is a factor. What if the sirens go off in the middle of the night and the days and that's a concern. And of course, the traffic congestion. This has all been created and an increase in this, in the police station in our quiet neighborhood. But I know you've done all the studies and I'm not, I'm not, that's fine. But I hope you will continue, continue to moderate, moderate them and, or monitor them and be mindful of our requests. That's all I wanted to say. Just, we're going to be watching.
Okay. Thank you, Joanne. Anyone else? Yes, Ray?
My name is Ray Hiltz. I live at 2748 Foxclav Loop. I enjoyed the discussion or comments, however, if some of the people would have attended some of the council meetings or read the paper on Willetta, there's been discussions for well over a year that I believe the neighborhood has given the okay. I believe the gate will be locked most of the time, only under emergency, coming out. And from all indications, what I've heard in the past is that it'll be, the Pacific Boulevard will be used. So, some of the comments made tonight, I, if they would have been attending the hearings or council meetings, they would have heard all this in the past.
All right. Thank you, Ray. Anyone else that would like to comment? Okay. All right. Not seeing anyone. So, next is the applicant, which is, do you have any rebuttal testimony? Yep. Uh-huh. McKinsey? Yeah. Architects? Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Brian Varricchione. I'm a planner at McKinsey. The last name's spelled V A R R I C C H I O N E. And the street address at McKinsey is 1515 Southeast Water Avenue in Portland, Oregon, 97214. So, I'm a land use planner who assisted with the compilation and preparation of this application. We've worked very closely with your planning staff as well as your technical engineering staff and the, obviously, the Police Department. And we're pleased to be in front of you this evening to talk about this great project that's going to help out the community. Wanted to address a few of the questions that came up during the public testimony and appreciate that people have raised these issues for your consideration. This, this dialogue is very robust and useful for the council and the community to end up with a product that everyone's satisfied with. The first question to touch on was the definitions in your development code. Police stations are classified as community service uses. While they will have the five temporary holding cells, those are really incidental to the overall operation of the facility. Primarily to be office, there'll be some community space and storage of evidence, et cetera, and then this handful of cells there. But I really don't believe that this would rise to the level of falling under that category of a detention facility or jail because it's not a single purpose facility. It's, it's not built solely for that use. It's just incidental, as I mentioned. Number of questions raised about traffic. Our transportation engineers did estimate 492 daily trips. As Mr. Cordier assumed, one trip equals one direction either coming in or As Mr. Cordier assumed, one trip equals one direction either coming in or, or leaving the site. And it's anticipated that the majority of those will be using Pacific Boulevard. You know, the practice of the, the police facility will be to use that as their primary exit, and Willetta is really meant to be secondary. Emergency, yes. Some public may choose to go in and out of there. They have that opportunity, or they can go out on Pacific Boulevard, but given the convenience of the highway right there, it's anticipated that the majority of, of trips will head in that direction. So that should minimize the impacts on the neighborhood overall. There was also some questions raised about the safety and convenience of entering and exiting the highway, and that's, since the highway's under the jurisdiction of Oregon Department of Transportation, this is something they've looked at, and your, our transportation engineers and the city's transportation engineers have, have worked in partnership with ODOT to site the driveway in a location that's, you know, optimal. Basically, it's centered between existing driveways to, and road intersections to maximize sightlines and reduce opportunities for conflict between left turns and that sort of thing. And then finally, I wanted to mention the parking lot lights, and as part of the design, the lights that were selected have cut off thick features on them in order to direct the light downward rather than let it spill over onto any adjoining properties. I think that's about it. As, as David Martineau mentioned, we feel that this application does meet the approval criteria for the conditional use permit as well as the vacation and the replat. Thank you very much.
All right. Any questions? Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you. Is that it then for city side for rebuttal? Okay. All right. And does any staff member wish to respond to any testimony presented? David?
Staff is available to answer any questions.
Okay. All right. So at that, at this time then, I will declare the public hearing closed at eight forty-seven PM. And counsel, do you have questions? So if not, you do have on the, handed out on the dais an ordinance that was revised ordinance. Let's see if I can find it either here, right here. Okay. Would you like the deputy city attorney to read, do the first reading?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
An ordinance vacating a portion of the Willetta Street right-of-way north of Twenty-Ninth Avenue and a portion of the Cathy Creek Drainage right-of-way west of Pacific Boulevard in Albany, Oregon, adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance be read a second time and title only.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, second reading.
An ordinance vacating a portion of the Willetta Street right-of-way north of Twenty-Ninth Avenue and a portion of the Cathy Creek Drainage right-of-way west of Pacific Boulevard in Albany, Oregon, adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. That was the second. Was it Stacy? Okay. All right. Any discussion?
I think everything was kind of addressed, and staff did a good job and addressed the concerns of residents, so neighborhood meetings, I think, really help, help a lot, so, because that room was full at the neighborhood meeting, so, yeah.
Okay? Yes?
Procedural question.
Uh-huh.
Don't we have to address the conditional use application and replat as a separate item, or was that all incorporated within the ordinance just passed?
We haven't passed the ordinance yet, but the ordinance-
It was read in second time.
Right. Is that what's in the, or David?
I think we should, we should make a decision on the land use applications as well. I think it's suggested that they're court-
Right. Yeah, so this is the first motion, that's the second.
Oh, I see.
Okay. So we'll be doing two separate, two separate motions.
Okay. I don't think I have that blue sheet.
It was in one of the folders.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay. So this first mo- motion, thank you, on the ordinance, is there any more discussion before you go? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. And the second motion then.
I would move that the city council approve the request for the conditional use review and the replat to construct a new police station. The motion is based upon the findings, conclusions, and the conditions of the staff report and testimony presented at the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. So within five days of the decision, the community development director will provide written notice of the decision to the applicant and any other parties entitled to notice. A decision of the city council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than twenty-one days after the decision becomes final. Okay. All right. And that is it with this first hearing. And now we have another hearing, so let me get my, it's here. Okay. All right. Thank you, folks. Okay. So on tonight's agenda is a quasi judicial public hearing regarding planning file VC oh three fifteen, CU oh eight fifteen, and RL eleven fifteen. The applicant is the city of Albany. I call to order this public hearing at eight fifty-one PM. If you wish to testify, please sign in at the table next to the meeting recorder. Do any members wish to declare a conflict of interest? Do any members wish to report any ex parte contact?
Only that I've attended several public meetings on the issue.
That's pretty much standard.
Yep. And do any members wish to report a site visit? Goodness, you can't hardly miss this.
Then they're done.
The station.
Passed it nine thousand times.
Yes. Uh-huh. And do any members wish to abstain from participating in the proceedings? Okay. Does anyone wish to challenge the city council's right to determine this matter or the participation of any counselor in this hearing and decision? Okay. For all those wishing to testify, please be aware that you must raise an issue with enough detail to afford the council and parties an opportunity to respond to the issue if you later want to raise that issue on appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards the approval standards staff will describe or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you believe apply to the decision. If additional documents or evidence are provided by any party, the city council may allow a continuance or leave the record open to allow the parties a reasonable opportunity to respond. Any continuance or extension of the record requested by the applicant shall result in a corresponding extension to the hundred and twenty day limit. Failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with enough detail, detail to allow the local government or its designee to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in circuit court. So at this time, I call for the staff report, and Planner Melissa Anderson, it's your turn.
Thank you very much, mayor and council. Very pleased to present to you the proposal for development of the new fire station. This is proposed to replace existing Fire Station eleven, which is approximately sixty-five years old. It was built in nineteen fifty. And the new fire station, this is a street view from what it would look like from Lyons Street, and it maximizes the exposure onto Lyons Street where you have a plaza at the main entrance of, of the proposed building. And this application incorporates a few different land use actions, so they are processed concurrently. We have the street vacation, conditional use, replat, and site plan review criteria are addressed. The vacation was initiated at city council as is required by state law to be initiated first. And this process all, also included public notice in the newspaper and direct mailing, posting the property. The Planning Commission had a public hearing on this in November, and now we are here at the city council for the final decision on all of these land use applications. This is an aerial view of, of the property. The new fire station is going to include apparatus bay, living quarters, offices, community room and classrooms, and parking on the side and the rear. And to accommodate this, a portion of Sixth Street is proposed to be vacated, and this would allow for emergency vehicles to have a pull-through from Baker Street, and it avoids, voids what they have to do now, which is backing out onto Lyons Street. The replat consolidates several parcels, as you can see here, into one parcel along with that street vacation. This property is actually in a couple different zoning districts. To the west is the Lyons Ellsworth, which is a mixed-use zoning district, and that allows a community service use building such as the fire station through a site plan review criteria. And to the west is the Hackelman-Montith residential zoning district, so it's split zone. But that district also allows the community service use through the conditional use process, so, which is what we're going through now. And actually, the historic district bounds the exterior of the property, so it is just outside of the historic district boundary. And the surrounding land uses here, we have the Democrat Herald across the street to the west, the Mark Thomas Motors, and then the Hasty Freeze on the same block just south of the property, and the Hasty Freeze, I want to assure you, is staying there. Nothing is going to happen to Hasty Freeze. To, to the west are residential uses, and landscaping is provided along that western boundary, which kind of separates and provides a buffer between the proposed fire station and those existing residential uses. Sorry. Now, the review criteria that was addressed in the staff report in detail that was included in your packet is Albany Development Code, criteria for street vacations, conditional uses, the replat, and site plan review. And through the staff analysis, we have found that the proposed use as proposed and conditioned meets all of the applicable criteria. The Planning Commission recommended approval unanimously as conditioned. And now we have time for the public hearing, and if you have any questions for staff, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions? Yeah, please.
Just an observation. You might want to correct the one slide that shows the location of the DH and Mark Thomas. They're flip-flopped.
They're flip-flopped. Yes. I'm not sure I can adjust it now.
You don't need to do it for the purpose of us, but for the record.
But for the record, yes. They're flip-flopped. Apologize for that.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Melissa. So now we will take testimony from the applicant.
I just wanted to take a couple minutes to give you an update on our process and where we're at, very similar to what's been going on with the police station property. We're in phase two of a three-phase process also. We've received our ninety percent completed plans from the architect and are currently tracking on budget for this, for this process. Also wanted to give you just a quick update on the property itself. Some of you may have noticed that Richard's cleaner started coming down yesterday. That should be completely demolished by the end of the week, and the week of January twenty-fifth, the Ralston Building will be dismantled. That'll be the next visible thing that the public will be able to see. That'll be followed in, in February, February twenty-first, with the, the old Edward Jones Building being moved down the road, and then, and then the next major part of that process will be the demolishing of Station eleven, which will occur probably in, in May or June sometime. We're concerned about the timing of the process and keeping this process moving forward, and with that, I'll let Stacy address those concerns.
So this is going to be a repeat of what I shared at the, during the previous, previous public hearing. February, we are on track to issue a public notice where we will pre-qualify general contractors who are interested in bidding on the project. Also in February, the plan is to submit the drawing set to the building department. Bidding for construction is going to take place between April and May of this year, and then construction is going to start first week of July. As mentioned by Chief Bradner, staff is requesting that the revised ordinance that was presented to council that includes the emergency clause be included with the ordinance. Without it, there is the potential to impact the schedule of the project, delaying the notice to proceed by up to six weeks, and staff's concerned that impacts to the schedule are going to result in increased costs.
Yeah, Bill?
Stacy, you mentioned on the police station that you were looking at about a June twenty-seventeen completion. Would that be the same timeframe of completion for the fire station as well?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Coming from the same week.
Okay. We will now take public testimony, first from those in favor of the application, followed by those in opposition or with concerns, and finally from anyone who is neutral. As I recognize you, please come to the podium, state your full name and address, spell your last name, and make any comments you may have for the counselor's consideration. If anyone wishes to enter an exhibit into the record as part of your testimony, please briefly describe the exhibit and then present it to our city clerk. Okay. Does any member of the audience wish to speak in support of the application? Okay. And does any member wish to speak in opposition? I did have one that signed up, which was Cameron.
My name is Camon Settlemeyer. Two thirty-seventh Avenue, southwest Albany, Oregon, nine seven three two one. And I'm not opposed to the building of the fire station itself. I am opposed to the destruction of the historic Ralston Building at one-two-three-seven, sorry, one-two-three, also sometimes known as one-seven-seven Southeast Seventh Avenue. This particular building was apparently Albany's first Dodge dealership. It was built in nineteen fifteen. It was built basically right on the property of the Ralston House, which is on the National Historic Register. It was very common back before automobiles, which is partly why this building was built to address the issue of lack of automobiles, to have buildings, small businesses built in right next to your house in residential neighborhoods. Why? Well, because it's right next door. You don't have to go very far to work. And you'll, you'll see a couple of examples of those in the Montith and Hackelman districts, both. So this, this is a good example of this. Architecturally, it is representative of the Hackelman National Historic District. In fact, if you look at, like, say, the rafter tails on it, they're a very close match to the bungalow island on Jefferson Street, which was also built at that same time period. It's very much a craftsman-style structure, wooden, it appears even, the front garage door is, is consistent with it. And it's, its use is fitting within a residential neighborhood because, again, that was a consistent type of use back in that time period to have very small businesses located right next door to your, to your house, in this case, straddling the, the property line. So it, it, it was really kind- So it was really kind of a transition building between the solid core of the houses in the Hackelman Historic District compared to the actual regular commercial district that was on Lyons Street. So in that regard, it actually serves as a very good buffer building in its current location. So, criterion one says that the proposed use is consistent with the intended character of the base zone and the operating characteristics of the neighborhood. And while that would be certainly true for the main portion of the Lyons Street area where Station 11 currently exists, I don't see how the proposed use is actually consistent with this particular property, which is currently zoned for the Hackelman-Montith. The Hackelman-Montith District, again, is intended primarily to preserve the existing single-family residential character of the Hackelman and Montith National Register Historic Districts, which this one does because it was built by the Ralstons next to their historic house in 1915, 101 years ago. Conversion of single-family residential structures to other uses, including multifamily residential, is not allowed. Well, the structure in question here isn't in and of itself being converted, but the use is being converted from the structure, from a historic structure, to being incorporated as part of a parking lot for a 23,000-square-foot building. And one of the things I really take exception with is conclusion 1.1, where it says there is currently a fire station on the site, and it says, "Assuming approval of the concurrent replat application, and the proposed development will improve the appearance, effectiveness, and reach of the existing use." So the assumption about it meeting the conditions is that it's rezoned to meet the conditions. That means in and of itself, it doesn't meet the conditions. The appearance, effectiveness, and fit with the Hackelman-Montith District is not going to fit in there as well. Now, I'm not saying, you know, don't build a fire station. I'm not against the fire station. What I am saying is that this particular structure acts as an actual buffer transition between the Hackelman National Historic District and the fire station itself in that transition. Furthermore, if you look at the actual drawings, the fire station footprint and this historic building footprint don't overlap. It's actually a little bit of landscaping and driveway or parking area that's showing, and I don't know why it would be necessary to tear this particular structure down when it fits in a very small corner of the overall footprint of the parking and the fire station And the other thing that confuses me a little bit is the fact that we're talking about the demolition of this. When this was brought up before, City Council passed a motion, I believe it was July 8th, I know it was last summer, that the building was going to be moved rather than torn down. And I haven't heard any updates or any effort at all on the part of the city to move the building rather than tear it down. So they're not holding up their own motion, which was, again, passed by City Council last year. So it's a violation on two parts. It's a violation of a City Council motion, and it's also a violation of zoning. So I would like to see that the approval of VC 315 CU 0815 and RL 1115, especially the CU 815 part of it, has a condition of acceptance that the building that was formerly known as 123 or 177 Southeast 7th, the structure is preserved in place, or a worst-case scenario that the building is not demolished, that it is moved.
All right. Any questions? Do you have to?
Yeah. Are you familiar with the condition of the building?
I heard it had dry rot in some places, but I don't have an update on that.
Yeah, that's what I've heard, too. I haven't actually looked at it, but that's word of mouth right here. And do you know anybody who is interested in having the building and moving it?
I haven't, but at the same time, I haven't heard the city do its part to try to announce that and find someone that can do that, which was part of the resolution of the motion passed last year.
As I recall, our intent at that time was if someone would like to move it, they'd be welcome to it, and I don't know if they offered some help in moving it. Do you recall that?
No, I think Chief Bradner has a report on that and can respond.
But the other thing, again, if you look at the site map, it's tucked right in the corner, so it's actually not really interfering with the fire station itself. You know, maybe a couple parking spots.
Here again, could somebody use it in that spot for something productive and to preserve the building? I don't think anybody would want to live in it.
Well, the building itself could be used for potentially a lot of uses, anything from displaying Albany's, part of Albany's antique fire apparatus, certainly not all of them, to a restaurant. I mean, it's possible it could be converted into a residence. I mean, it's actually got a covered patio, which would be a good spot for a restaurant because it's actually covered and it tends to rain here, so. I mean, those are a couple examples. I haven't done a reuse study of the building myself.
I'm totally in sympathy with saving the building, but I think it's pretty late in the game to try to do it. I think we've already got someone who is offering to take it down and recover the lumber.
Well, again, I do hope somebody does save the lumber out of the wood.
Isn't that in the process as much?
But, I mean, well, they would say it's late in the game, but why aren't you following your own resolutions from last year as far as the intent is to preserve it then? You're like, oh, we're just gonna ignore it, and oh, now we need to demolish it.
Yeah. I think the chief will be able to respond to that on what efforts, you know, took place.
And the other thing is that the city has set aside a certain amount of funding for art, correct, as part of the station?
Mm-hmm.
You want to look at art, look at the craftsmanship that went into this building. I mean, you look at the craftsmanship, the woodwork, that's art. I don't know why the city couldn't take some of the funds that are earmarked for the art side and use it to help move and/or preserve the building.
I think some of the wood, but the chief will be able to respond after testimony, but I think some of the wood is being planned for inside the building, too, but we'll find out.
So, I guess it concerns me, you want, you know, citizens of Albany to be responsible for their historic buildings, but yet the city of Albany is setting a very bad example here of not trying to do due diligence, not advertising it, not trying to find buyers to move it, not looking into moving it itself. I mean, you've got city property, say, on Sixth across from Swanson Park, for example, that's vacant and for sale. You know, it sets a very bad example. And Albany's looked to as an example community by others as far as a preservation standpoint, and this is going to give us a black eye because I don't see the due diligence here to try to preserve this building. I haven't seen any kind of effort based on that resolution last year as far as trying to move it. And again, I don't know why it can't be left in place. I mean, you're talking a couple parking spots that's not in the main footprint.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you, Cameron. Okay. Was there anyone else that was in opposition? Okay. I just, there was one other that signed up that said "other," and that was Chuck? Oh, airport. Okay. All right. So anyone else that wanted to comment on this application? Okay. With that, and does the applicant have any rebuttal? Yep, chief? I'm kind of curious myself about the Ralston Building, so.
So a number of steps have been taken in regards to the Ralston Building to try and initially save it. The direction that I recall from the council was do what we could to try and, you know, either reuse the building or to save the building in some manner, if at all possible. So we looked at the possibility of repurposing it and determined that it was extremely cost-prohibitive because of that dry rot, because of the settling. There was floor-to-ceiling issues with the roof sagging. On the east side of the building, one of the occupants that lived there had a raised bed, that the wall of the actual Ralston Building was one wall of the raised bed, and so the dirt was up against it for years, and you can literally go inside and see through the underneath side of the building. There are portions of the building that I've been advised not to walk into just because of how much sagging there is in that roof structure, and so we determined that it was not going to be possible to put enough money into it to save it and to repurpose it for anything that we wanted to do. Working with Kate Porsche, we did actually see if we could repurpose it to somebody else and determined through the process that, if I remember correctly, that there was inadequate parking available for a business to relocate there, and it was not possible under the Development Code to reuse it as a house. As part of our process, we do need that property for a couple purposes. One, obviously access coming in and out and the ability to have parking, and then there's also some bioswale area that comes through there that is necessary for the construction of the new station. Once we went through all of that, we then got to the point that we determined that we would repurpose the wood out of the building, and so, as I said earlier, actually the week of January 25th, salvage company will be coming in, and they will salvage all reusable lumber out of the building. There's some doors that can be repurposed. They'll actually be, along with that wood, incorporated into the interior portions of the new station, which we thought was a good compromise, I guess, if you will, that while we weren't able to save the building, we're able to at least keep characteristics of the building alive in the new station for years to come. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any more questions about that.
Questions? Dick?
During the deconstruction process, will the public have a chance to take some of the stuff that the contractor or the fire department isn't wanting to take?
I'm not sure if the public will have access to it. We've got a contract with the contractor, obviously, and then we will inform them as to what wood that we need, working with the architect, out of the building. They then have the right to reclaim other wood out of there as part of our contract with them. There may be some portions of the foundation or something that may be left afterwards, but I don't believe that that would be open up to the public to take.
Sometimes when the buildings are taken down, they just throw it all on a crusher of some sort.
Yeah.
And, for instance, the St. Mary's Gym, I was able to get some really nice flooring out of that that they're just gonna crush and throw away.
Yeah. It'd be nice to keep some of that historic wood here in Albany, but I'm glad we're fitting it into the new station, so. Yeah. Thank you. Other questions? Okay. Thank you, chief. And does staff have any more comments? Melissa?
Very briefly, I just wanted to address in terms of the criteria. Criteria one, consistent with the intended character of the base zone, is that fire station as a community service use is allowed through site plan review criteria in the Lyons-Elsworth zone and through the conditional use criteria through the HM zone. So it is an allowed use through this review process. I also wanted to just reiterate that the historic district boundary is just along the boundary of this site, and so, you know, if the boundary included the fire station, then we would also have a historic review process that would be going on, but it is outside of that, and so the historic review criteria doesn't necessarily apply to this. And in terms of buffering, the code requires landscaped buffer at least a minimum of 10 feet, and so there's a generous amount of landscaping that is buffering the west side of the project between the project and the residential uses to the west. And so I just wanted to put that on the record in terms of that it is allowed, it's outside of the historic district, and as a transition there is landscape buffering between the proposal and the existing residential uses.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Melissa. Any questions? Okay. With that, I will declare the public hearing closed at 9:20 PM. And council, what would you like to do with this? You do have a green sheet that says in your folder.
Can we have a first reading of the ordinance that was distributed tonight?
The one out on the dais, okay. Yep.
An ordinance vacating a portion of the Sixth Avenue right-of-way in Albany, Oregon, in adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
We'll make a motion. The ordinance be read a second time and title only.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Second motion.
An ordinance, excuse me. An ordinance vacating a portion of the Sixth Avenue right-of-way in Albany, Oregon, in adopting findings and declaring an emergency.
We'll make a motion for adoption of the ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. And was there any additional motions that needed to take place? I, for some reason, did not have green sheets, but my folder, so.
For the condition use for the site.
Okay.
The second one.
Okay, the first and second?
Yeah, we did the first.
Okay, we did the first, so second one. Okay?
Mayor, I would move that the City Council approve the request for conditional use review, site plan review, and replat to construct the new fire station. Motion is based upon the findings, conclusions, and conditions of the staff report and testimony presented at this hearing.
Second.
Okay. All right. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. All right. Was that it, Melissa? You take care. Okay. I'll read the rest of the little pink sheet. Within five days of the decision, the Community Development Director will provide written notice of the decision to the applicant and any other parties entitled to notice. A decision of the City Council may be appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals by filing a notice of intent to appeal not later than 21 days after the decision becomes final. Okay. All right. Thank you, folks. We took care of those two items. And, was that it? Okay. And next is business from the public, and I know we got some folks that are kind of been anxious for this item. Yeah, Heath? Yeah?
Heath Casper, K-A-S-P-E-R, 33790 Meeker Hill Road, Albany, Oregon. He's from the Airport Commission, which I'm a member of, to help you manage the airport. We learned about the sale of the Armory property, which is a historic part of the airport, through the newspaper, which is not the way that I think you would like us to manage the airport. We have a finite number of resources, and I'll try to make this short for the late hour. We have a finite number of resources at the airport, finite amount of money, to sell a piece of property and not put the money back in the airport so that we can do some of the things that we need to do: obstruction surveys, finish our master plan, automated weather station. We have lots of needs at the airport and very little funding. When we formed, we were losing money, tens of thousands of dollars every year. We're now self-sufficient. We don't take any money from the general fund, but we're not very profitable. So the Armory property, which you, like I said, we just learned about you're selling, that money needs to stay at the airport, in my opinion, and the commission's opinion.
Okay.
That's it.
All right. Okay.
Questions?
Any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you, Heath. Anyone else from business from the public? Okay. Not, oh, yeah, Chuck?
Hi. Chuck Cratch, K-R-A-T-C. Hi, Chuck Cratch, K R A T C H, North Albany, 1720 North Ferguson Drive. I rise to speak tonight about the airport. A year ago, almost to the night, we addressed you folks and asked you to consider lending money to a private party to build hangars at the airport to increase the revenue to make the airport even more self-sufficient or less of a detriment to the city. To this point, nothing's been done on that. Tonight, I'm requesting you consider holding a portion of those funds from the armory to lend to private parties or individuals to build hangars on the site. This will increase revenue substantially, reducing the dependency on city funding. If you would consider 200,000 to 250,000, it would build one of those giant hangars like we see down at the end. We have, there is today no vacant spaces. All hangars are rented. There is, there are people that would come here if we had more hangar space. If you need an add-on committee to look into this, see if it's viable, or if the city would like to use the money to build a hangar themselves, why not? But I'd like us to see, I'd like to see the city take some of the funding from this surprise to the airport commission sale and contribute it or reserve it for construction of additional hangar space. My comments? Thank you.
Questions? Okay, thank you, Chuck. Anyone else from business from the public? All right. Council, I think what we'll do, since the folks are here, well, that item that they're sort of interested in is on page 332. So, I think I'll just adjust agenda and if we just want to go ahead and do the report on that right now so the folks don't end up having to sit through the rest of our business. They've been very patient this evening, as is, so. Chris, you're the lead on this one.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. As Heath mentioned, at a airport advisory commission meeting a couple of months ago, they discussed the sale of the armory property, which was part of the original property that was purchased for the municipal airport in the 1920s. The commission felt that, as Heath and Chuck stated, all or a portion of those funds would be appropriately dedicated, should be appropriately dedicated to the airport to support primarily future capital projects. They included a letter that's in your packet that further explains their thinking on this and several members of the commission and interested parties are here if you have other questions for them tonight. That's the end of my report.
Are there any questions?
I have a question. Does anybody know where the money came from to buy the airport property to begin with?
Well, we know that it was not federal money. It was, I don't know how the city purchased it, found the money to purchase it, but it was not through a federal program.
Because they didn't have one, then?
Well, right.
So, what's the history on the armory building there in the first place?
Well, there are probably here that know a lot more about that than I do.
I can talk a little bit about it, only because we sort of discovered by accident that we owned it. Back, it's been about probably six, seven years ago, we were approached by the National Guard indicating that they wanted to renew the lease on the building. And so, that caused us to dig into the files and come up with the original lease. I think it was, my recollection, it was built in about 1970 and has, and the terms were that it would be a multi-year lease with the National Guard, essentially giving them control of the property into the indefinite future. And really, that's the status of the armory as today. Even if we sell the property, it would still be used as a National Guard armory, as far as we know, until such time as another location might be located or they might receive funds to build a new armory. So, one of the reasons why I think it was attracted, an attractive offer from the county is, is that the city, from the city's perspective, we had basically said we would give unlimited use of the property to the National Guard.
For a dollar a year.
Yeah, for a dollar a year. So, it's not, it was never intended that the city used that property to make money. It clearly was taken out of airport use 40-some years ago and hasn't been used for airport purposes during that period of time. Now, that doesn't speak to what you want to do in the future, that's just the way it's been in the past. And so, when we received the offer from the county, it was just, it was sort of a surprise to us. The original discussions that we were having with the county were over the sale of the police station. And during those discussions, we received an offer from the county saying, would you be willing to sell the armory as well? And the council, I think, agreed with staff that, yeah, it makes good sense. Again, the armory, the National Guard has the property tied up for basically as long as they want to, so it didn't seem like a huge problem.
But it, but it ended up, we were surprised they put in the offer for the armory, but it was also what the total package was, was sort of what we were considering was going to be the value of the police station anyway. So, it ended up being they reduced the amount for the police station. That's kind of offered what we were thinking, you know, if it went out for a private entity. But pretty much the overall, what, between the two, is what we could have got for the police station, too.
That's, yeah, actually, the appraisal that was done on the police property, well, no, the appraisal on the police property, I believe, was about 1.2 million and I believe the offer from the county was like 1.75 for both.
For both of them.
So, there was like an additional $500,000 that you could attribute to the armory property, if my memory is. Sean, you're the one handling that, does that sound about right?
Yes, I know, I know the purchase price is spot on. I believe you're right on how they allocated the offer as well, but.
Yeah.
So, I guess I'm confused just in a little bit, maybe it's already glossed over in my mind, getting late and brain cells are fogging up here. If we take the offer from the county, what happens to the National Guard armory then?
Stays there.
It stays there until such time as the National Guard chooses that they, to vague aim.
Okay.
Ed Rich?
There may be, somebody at the county may know something, I don't know. Because there were, there was talk of consolidation among the guard, different units, and that would require a different place, a bigger space. And I don't know that they do or don't, but it just seemed that they know something.
Well, some years ago, the National Guard approached us with the idea of perhaps having a regional facility. The representatives of the guard at that time were probably retired by now. When they talked to me, were saying, well, we're hoping to have this money allocated for some, you know, bigger facility at a different location. And, you know, we offered to be, to assist them with that, help in any way we could, and never heard from them again. And so, that's where it stands as of right now.
We had looked at it when they met with us, what was it, six or seven years ago, it was still good jobs that were out of that facility. So, we had no idea that we really had owned it, so it was like, it was, we wanted to really retain them in Albany because they were providing some good jobs. So, it was a benefit, so, but yeah, so. Ed, did you want to say something? Okay, come up and say, I don't think, well, we're probably not going to be making a decision on this anyway, this evening, so this is just more information. So, we have not had really a sealed deal yet from, we haven't had a check in hand from the county.
We've not, we're drawing up the documents.
Yeah, yes, okay.
My name is Ed Hemmingson. I've been here since 1955, so I know quite a bit about the airport, since I learned to fly there in about 1957 and got my ticket there. And since I wrote the history of the airport and submitted it for the National Registry of Historic Places, I'd have some basic recollection. The property was owned by the farmers, Stanberg, I think was their name, and it was purchased by the city of Albany with public funds in about 1920, '29. It was first established as an airport in 1920 by Charlie Langmack and who lived here all his life. And so, I don't know where you say the money come from, except that it was local money, it was public funds. The city of Albany bought the land, it was something like 280 acres. And since that time, it was all airport property. Since that time, it's been whittled away by various things, down to about 85 acres is what's left of it. And the people who, the aviation community who supported the airport all these years feels, and I agree with them, that any part of the airport that's going to be sold now, so that original property ought to be used for airport needs. It's a fine airport, one of the best in the state or in the country, and it should be kept that way. And it does need funds to keep it up. If you'd left it alone the way it was when we took it over, it would have had a narrow, short runway and there would have been room for air shows because we wouldn't have had a fairgrounds there and closed off the, there was extra footage of there, of the strip. But so, there's a lot, but that's all water under the bridge, over the dam, and so forth and so on. But we definitely would not like to see additional funds retrieved by selling off what little is there left to be able to sell of the airport property and not use it for the airport. And I think that's almost a universal statement by everybody who's been there and uses it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ed. That refreshed my memory on the history of it, thank you. Okay, so, council, it's pretty much kind of just information tonight because really we don't have a check in the hand to really have a decision for what you want to do for those funds, but it'll be coming back to, back to you.
Yeah, I just have a question. When, when we agreed to sell it, did we decide what the money was going to be used for? Was it going to go to the police? I mean, because I can't remember. I know we voted on it, but I can't remember.
No, you did not designate what purposes the money would be used for.
Oh, okay, great, thank you.
Right, so. Chuck, you have to come to the podium, the tape has to machine, tape machine.
Hey, Chuck Cratch, I wonder if you'd consider allowing the airport commission to come back to staff with some suggestions or proposals for use of the funding, so you wouldn't just be saying, let's give the airport or retain the airport. We could give you specifics, given some time to come back to you.
I think what's best now is we kind of wait to make sure this is going to be a sealed deal and then the council can actually then add, we'll have it at a work session, they can send it to the airport commission, you know, if they choose to make those recommendations. So, there's, there'll be a lot of options that we can, you know, consider at that time. Yeah, Floyd, thank you.
Just a piece of information for council is, when we did liquidate, the parcels were the, upon Opel, for the restaurant and the motels, that money was set aside in reserve accounts and through our accounting processes held for money match or grant applications and other improvements. So, I forgot the total acreage up there, 2.9 or thereabouts where the motels are. That was reserved for the airport.
It was.
Does that still exist somewhere?
No, I think that money has been consumed as match money over time and for other onsite improvements, like the fuel system and others.
Well, I'm sure some of it has been used, but most of it went into a reserve fund. And then, when the airport operating budget was upside down, going to be upside down, it was transferred into balanced operating budget, so it still exists, most of it still exists as a reserve. We still have about $200,000 in reserve in the operating budget. And then, we also have the additional capital budget that the council formed from the transient lodging tax portion that the airport receives. And so, there's additional funds in that budget that are dedicated to capital projects for the airport. And I think 180,000, I can't remember the exact number, but there's a, that's a fund that has been growing for the last couple of years as well.
And I know that Stuart was keeping track, because almost every budget year, I'd ask for an accounting of how much we consumed and what do we use it for, of the money that was reserved from the sale of the hotels, site and the restaurant site.
It's all still in the airport budget, what hasn't been used.
Well, do you think we can have that study session before an election occurs? Because, you know, things that we don't count on happen in elections and I think it'd be nice to either say we're going to use the proceeds for the airport or have that discussion sooner rather than later. And I like to say I'd be in favor of allocating that money to the airport from the sale of the armory property.
Okay, all right, so, okay, yeah, it'll go to work session soon as we have.
When we deliver the check, well, that'll be a trigger point for what do we want to do with it.
Yeah.
So, I'm sure.
And at the time, we have that work session, I guess, for staff, some of the information that I'd like to see is, you know, it was indicated we have zero vacancies, how many, how many hangars we have, how many tie-downs, the sites, number of actual users, whether the users are Albany residents or regional residents, I think would be helpful information.
And in the meantime, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't allow the airport committee to look into where they might like to see an improvement or whatever. I think.
We don't have to allow them to do that, they can do it on their own if they want.
I'm sure they will.
I don't know.
It's input to the CIP, it's input to the CIP process.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, maybe encourage is a better word. I don't know, I don't know if you like that.
Okay, all right, so this item will be coming back to you at a work session. Okay, thank you, folks.
Have we completed the master plan? I've lost track of where we are on that.
Yeah, it should be wrapping up in the spring. There's been staff turnover at the FAA, it's been the big problem lately, but I think it's, we got approval for the most significant part, which is the layout plan, and so I think it's wrapping up.
So, within the master plan will be a series of recommendations for future improvements?
Yes.
Okay, that all dovetails together.
Sure.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, great.
Okay, so, we are back on the front page again.
Could we take a five-minute break?
We can, we just need a break, yes.
Thank you.
A break would be a good idea.
I can always keep on going, keep on going.
And thank you for moving the airport folks up in the agenda, that they.
Yeah, that was good.
Yeah, I knew they'd do it.
We used to have all of our, you know, boards and commissions kind of give us an annual report and maybe we can kind of see if, and that can be kind of addressed at that time. Yeah, okay. Anything else?
All clear.
All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried. Next is adoption of the resolution, and this is on page 270, but there's another one on the dais I believe that replaces it. Is that correct, Chief?
Actually, no, that'll be for another item.
Oh, this one's another item. Okay. Then it would be on page, resolution's page 270.
Correct.
Okay.
So I'm actually disappointed that the crowd cleared out because we've got two items from the fire department that I'm extremely excited to be sharing with the council tonight. The first one is that we're seeking approval to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with Lebanon and fire, and Tangent Fire Districts to jointly staff a single role medic unit to assist with the increasing emergency calls and hospital, hospital transfers, and to reclassify one previously approved EMT position to a paramedic level, and then add up to four-time EMTs or paramedics to maintain staffing on our new Medic 71. And I'll explain that a little bit more. So our, as, as the memo detailed, our emergency responses have been skyrocketing over the last five years. We've seen a 24.6% increase in our call volume, and it's, that, that trend is continuing and it's actually getting worse, and we're running more calls with fewer firefighters than we had five years ago. In 2010, we averaged 17.8 emergency responses and per 24-hour period, so 17.8. Last year, we averaged 21.4, and while it's only 12 days into the new year, during the first 12, 12 days of this year, we're averaging 25.5. So we're seeing it just steadily go up. And, and this year, those numbers include a 48th call day on January 3rd, followed by a 38 call day on January 4th, which was, set a record for us in the department. We've never run that many calls before. We've actually only run 40 calls three times, and two of those three times were within 35 days of each other, January 3rd, and then 35 days prior to that. I believe it was in, and, and November 30th, I think, or something like that. So we're definitely seeing a huge increase in our call volume. And, kind of also as, as a comparison, in 2010, our busiest day during that year, we ran 31 calls. Whereas last year, we had 20 days that we were 30 or over. So we're, we're seeing a huge increase. And that increase has taken a toll, a toll on the department. We're seeing an increase in work-related injuries, and then, and then subsequently overtime for firefighter staff to work back for, for those individuals. And, and something I've shared with you before, but I want to just reiterate, we are always thinking about the next emergency, not just the call that the crews are out on right now. They just went out a couple minutes ago on, on a call. Not just that call, but we have to be focused on being ready and prepared for the next call. And so having the, the available resources, and we work very closely with our, our mutual aid districts, those, those departments that surround us, but we've always got to be thinking about that next call. And when we're running 48 calls in a day, it's really hard to be ready for that. And that, that then leads to delayed responses and, and, you know, issues with us getting there on time. Our three departments, Lebanon, Albany, and Tangent, as well as other departments in the area, we've been having conversations about ways that we can collaborate together in order to innovatively come, deliver the service that, that, that we know that the community needs, but in a fiscally responsible way. So, other, other departments, those that are involved in this, in this intergovernmental agreement are also seeing significant increases in their call volume, too. And collectively, we all support working together to try to put on this jointly staffed, single role medic unit. And single role, I'll explain that. These individuals will not be dual role, so they won't be firefighters and EMTs, that'd be a dual role employee. They'll be single role employees, they'll just be EMTs or paramedic, and they'll just respond on medical calls on an ambulance. The reason why we're calling it Medic 71, it'll actually be staffed at the Tangent Fire Station, and it'll be able to come toward Albany or into Albany and assist us, or head to Lebanon and assist them on calls, or even respond on, on calls in the Tangent area. We see this as a, as a, as a great option to help us continue to provide a level of service that, that we believe the community needs. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Questions? Bessie, then, Dave.
Well, Chief, can you, what kind of calls were they that increased so much? I mean, were they medical, were they fire? What were they?
Really, it's across the board. Our percentage of medical calls has stayed real consistently at 85, 86%, and, and we've continued that, and so it's just a, it's just more calls. On the medical side, we're, we're definitely responding to a lot more medical calls. In fact, in my, my next item that I'll bring to you on the community paramedic program, if I remember off the top of my head, 7,600 calls last year, 6,600 were medical. And then 4,400 of those resulted in transports to the hospital. So definitely seeing an increase in the medicals, but really, it's across the board, just community-wide, a lot more calls.
Yeah. And so, if I understand right, when you, when you do a fire or a medical, you do an engine and a paramedic? I mean, is there like a, where you have to have the two vehicles, I mean, the, the two staffs go to the emergency? Is that right?
So the way that we respond, we've got a priority dispatch system, and if we, depending on the information that the caller gives when they call 911, if it's an alpha response, that's a medic unit only without license siren.
Okay.
And then it works up to a delta level response, which is a fire engine and a medic unit both going code three, and that depends on the severity of the call.
Okay.
If it's somebody that, that has a lower-level, non-critical call, they're going to have an alpha response. If it's somebody who's having a heart attack, or a stroke, or, or a major trauma, or something like that, then it's going to be that delta level response.
Well, it just seems like to me that we, you know, police and fire are, to me, are major responsibility, and I think in our next budget session, we need to think somehow of, of increasing some of these because we're just going to overload people to where they're going to, you know, get so overworked that they're going to leave. And we, I don't think we want that to happen. So I think we need to really seriously think about how we're going to maybe budget more firefighters and policemen, because you could only do so much with so little. So, thanks.
Yeah, I was wondering, does our area meet that a mutual boundary with Lebanon's area for fire and ambulance?
Yes, we, we share a common boundary with them and with Tangent.
Okay.
Yeah.
Questions? Okay, council.
I know one of the, kind of, it's a different subject. Well, while you're there, it's a, what did Hossel call that? He wasn't very appreciative of our-
Podium.
-podium there. He thought we ought to have a table, and I tend to agree with him. But anyway, did the other gal who was involved in that life-saving deal, did she show up late?
She, she did, yeah.
I thought I saw you going out there, catching her.
Oh, okay.
Could you invite her to come back so we can recognize her as a council?
Sure, sure. Like I said earlier, her name was, I believe, Amanda Jurgens, and she showed up late, and so I ended up giving it to her out in the hallway.
I was saying, before she announced her.
Which I didn't figure I could come in right then and interrupt.
Yeah, maybe we could give it to her again.
Yeah. She was actually very appreciative that she didn't have to get up. I don't, I don't think-
She may not want to come back.
Yeah. But we, but we can offer that up, though.
She came in and she sat over there for a while.
Yeah.
And then finally kind of got up to look, and then I think you were kind of connecting the dots, thinking, I think this is her.
Yeah.
Yeah.
John, a couple of questions, you know, I guess, and observations with our increasing demographics and the shifting towards the agent with our new Bonaventure facility and the other ones we have out here. What kind of call volumes are we getting from those types of facilities?
Definitely seeing more calls. Bonaventure, the first seven weeks it was open, we were averaging one call a week. That, that was as of about a week ago. We, we went to Bonaventure again today. I, I know that, so we're probably eight for eight right now. I'm sure once it gets fully housed, it'll, it'll be probably a couple times a week that we'll be going there. So we, we definitely go to the care facilities, the senior facilities, a lot. That's, that's a, a big driver of our, of our call volume.
And one of your comments on your lead-in, you said, I forgot the numbers, 7,600 calls, of which 4,400 were transports?
Correct.
So there's a billing process for the transports?
Correct.
There's no billing process for the, on, non-transport calls?
Correct.
But it's taking our personnel out of station. Do other jurisdictions have a minimum fee for a response?
Typically, no. If, if, there are some cases where we will, if we go and we render aid in that we're, we're providing a certain level of care, even though we don't transport, we do a, a aid call, it's called an aid call, and we have a, a lower-level fee for that. That's not, that doesn't happen a lot of the time, a lot of the times. But typically, most departments don't for just that good intent call, I guess, if you will, where somebody calls and they don't actually need our services, or we're able to-
I guess my concern would be, just having gone through placing a mother-in-law and mother in a senior facility, is that some facilities might have minimum staffing, and they use our people as supplemental staff. So if somebody falls between the stool and the wall, and they, you know, they got one person on night shift, they can't get them out, they call our folks here, and they respond and provide some level of service, but they don't transport them. And so there's no reimbursement for your services.
And that is an issue that we do deal with, and I've had some conversations with Wes about maybe going down the path of billing the facility. Obviously, there's some legal ramifications we'd have to work through at the city attorney's office, but that is something that we have considered doing.
Well, that's, I, I for one would certainly encourage the conversation, because as our demographics curve moves, I think we're going to see an increase of those types of calls.
Yeah.
It's going to be pulling our, our dual classification people out, so it has the potential of diminution of response to fire.
And, and actually, I mean, some of the facilities, I mean, an example, when I just had my in-laws, you know, in Wynwood, they had the staffing, but when you got small gals working, you know, two, it takes four, it took four people to pick up my father-in-law, and they had, they couldn't do it. They had to call the paramedics. So you guys' call volume load was reduced after he passed away, because they were there constantly having to pick him up. But even they can get the staffing, but it's hard picking up some of those folks, because when they're just limp, you know, they just, it's very hard to do it, so.
I'm, I'm just thinking that's something the council needs to think about in the future.
Mm-hmm, yeah. We do have a lot of senior facilities in our community, but it does put a bigger load on our, on our, you know, fire department, so, yeah. Okay, so-
Sure. I'm, I'm a very strong believer in fire med, and does that pencil out for you as far as revenue, or do you lose money on that over time?
No, it does pencil out. We had a time, I'm going to say three years ago now, where it was getting to the point that it wasn't going to pencil out. We raised the rate up to, I believe we're-
60 or something like that.
65, I think, if I remember right. And since that time, we actually increased membership, which was really interesting. We thought that when we raised the rate, we would lose a portion of the members, but the membership rate actually went up after that. And, and since we did that, we've actually made money. It's not a lot of money we're making on it.
It's not, it's, it's, yeah, it's, good.
Covering costs.
It's covering costs. Yep.
Mayor, I'd move the resolution on page 270.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, motion carried.
Thank you.
All right. You might as well stay there, you're going to be coming up real close.
Oh, good way to have the notes.
Okay, next is adoption of the consent calendar, and there's quite a few items, mostly minutes. If there isn't any items needing to be pulled off, we'll entertain a motion.
Who produced the calendar?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Now, Chief, you're up again.
This is the one that does have, in your folder, a, a new resolution, and I'll explain that here in just a minute. So this is another program that we're extremely excited about as well. As I just stated, our, our, we're busy. We're running more calls, and roughly 85% of those calls are medical responses. Unfortunately, too often, people are accessing the healthcare system through the most expensive means possible. They have a situation happen, they call 911, they get an emergency ambulance who then takes them into the emergency room, and they get a $1,000-plus bill from the ambulance, they get a multi-probably $1,000 bill from the emergency room, and, and there may be a better method to get that individual, to either keep that individual maybe out of the healthcare system, or to get them into a, a different form of the healthcare system, either through their primary care physician, or even urgent care, or something along those lines. So what, what I'm asking tonight is that the city council approve a resolution to enter into a contract with IHN, which is Inner Health, Inner Community Health Network. They're the coordinated care organization for Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln Counties, and to appropriate funds for a one-year community pilot program, and, and then by the resolution, then to hire up to two full-time equivalent employees to support that program. Probably about two years ago, we became aware of community paramedic programs that were starting around the country. There was a couple of them in Oregon that got started, and so that kind of piqued our interest, and, and we then started having conversations with IHN, because they had some monies that were available that could go toward innovative programs to try and change that healthcare model, if you will, and other healthcare problems that are currently out there, and, and to improve the system that we currently have. So with the, the community paramedic program, that community paramedic is able to meet with individuals, they're referred to individuals through different means, either through an internal referral in our department, we have somebody that we go on who, we think they need, you know, some additional care, or some additional resources, possibly getting them into some senior disabled services, or mental health, or something along those lines. That individual, the community paramedic, would be able to have the, the, the resources available, or they would have the knowledge, I should say, of the resources, that they could direct that individual to that proper level of care, as opposed to having them call 911. So some of those resources, or referrals, excuse me, will come from internal, some of them will come from external, either from IHN, who, they've told us that in Lynn County, and, and let me explain IHN a little bit more. IHN is the old Oregon Health Plan, or the old Medicaid, if you go back to that type of a system. IHN is for anybody that lives in Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln County who is on the old Medicaid or the old Oregon Health Plan. They're now a member of IHN, and that's basically their insurance provider. What they've told us is that in Lynn County, we have 45,000 people that are IHN members. And, and the last time I looked, I think the Lynn County population was 110,000, or 118,000, or somewhere around there. So we have a, a significant number of people in our county that are IHN members. And so they will provide some referrals to us. We may also get referrals through the Samaritan system, and then ultimately, this community paramedic can go out and, if you will, do a checkup on the individual. Once they've been discharged from the hospital, they can go meet with them and find out if they're following their discharge plan. Were they able to get their prescriptions filled that, that, when they were discharged from the hospital, that they received? If they're not able to, this individual would be able to then help them with making sure they get their prescription filled, and, and do different things like that to try and keep that person from having to have an incident a week later, two weeks later, whenever, and then access the healthcare system through the most of, most expensive means possible by calling an ambulance and going to an emergency room, and then starting that whole cycle again. We also believe that this program can potentially reduce our call volume. We're, we're trying to deal with this significant increase in call volume in a couple different manners. One is by collaborating with our neighboring agencies, the other is trying to see if there's things that we can do as an organization to reduce the number of calls that we go on. By having a community paramedic, we believe that individual will be able to go out and, and meet with some of the people that, that we may, maybe deal with on a more frequent basis, and, and others who, who just need a, a, a helping hand, if you will, in order to, to get through whatever the situation is that they have going on. So through that, we hope and we think that, that we'll see a, a reduction in, in our call volume. With that, IHN has, is very excited about this. They've actually, just before Christmas, they awarded us the, the money, and they're very excited about us doing this pilot program. They think that, that their members and their system will see significant benefit from it as well, and they're willing to put some money toward a one-year study to see if we can have an impact on, on healthcare in, in Lynn County, at least in, in the Albany, Albany area. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ray was first.
Are there any other communities involved in this pilot project? This is, we're the only one in the state?
Uh, no. The city of Redmond, Oregon, did a pilot program, I believe, about a year ago. Twelton Valley Fire District up in the Twelton area, Portland suburbs, they did one, and actually, they didn't do a pilot program, but they actually started their own program. They were able to fund it themselves, and so they've been doing it for a year or two, so they've got that program going. I'm not aware of any other programs going on currently in the state, or, or having happened previously.
So these two people would be hired, they'd be City of Albany employees?
Correct.
And it's just for one year?
Correct.
And what would be their level of training?
So one of the individuals is a current employee with us, and so we would actually transfer her from her current duties into doing this role for that period of time. She's been with our organization for 15 years, I believe now, or going on 15 years. Paramedic level, trained firefighter, also did some compliance stuff as well on the life safety side. So she's got quite a background in the organization already, which is really helpful, because she has a lot of those contacts that are really going to be necessary to get this program up and running as quickly as possible. The second individual, we haven't identified yet. There's, there's funding there to be able to hire a second one, and I'm not sure exactly how we're going to do that. In order to meet the benchmarks in the, in the pilot program, we've got to keep good records. And I think we're going to keep the community paramedic that we have, the one individual I referred to, I think we're going to keep her very busy out in the field, making contacts. And we want her to do that. We want her to really have an impact out there. The second person may be more of a data collection person, maybe cross-trained to do, you know, some backup fill-in on the paramedic side, but, but really, the focus and emphasis will probably be more on, on making sure that we're able to collect the data, and then, and then report that data appropriately to IHN. Couple of things that, that they want, IHN wants, is that, and they were clear with this upfront, they want sustainability, and they want scalability. So scalability, they would love to see, if this is successful, they'd love to see it's a program that can be scaled out to the rest of their area. You know, maybe Lynn, all of Lynn County first, and then maybe Lynn, Benton County, and Lynn, Benton, Lincoln, or something like that. Sustainability, they want to see something that just doesn't die at the end of, of a year, that has enough value, they can look at it and say, yeah, it has enough value. We want to keep supporting that financially into the future. And so our goal, obviously, is to try and do what we can to keep it sustainable, and then to look at, at making it scalable.
Sure, and I understand that would be the goal, but on the other hand, it may not pencil out and-
Correct.
...and doesn't work, and that's the, the purpose of the one-year pilot program.
Yep.
So you're not really going to hire two people, you're going to transfer somebody. Do you need to backfill that position, or then you have a person short in your department? How's that work?
Yeah, no, we would, we would backfill that position. We would look at, at trying to put somebody else into the deputy fire marshal's position that she's currently in, and then that would create probably a firefighter vacancy, and we're actually in the process of a firefighter recruitment right now, so, for a vacancy that we have. So we would look at filling two positions. One of them potentially would just be for a one-year slot, depending what happened with the pilot.
So I'm looking at the budget impact, and, and the original thought was this is just a break even, that, that you'd hire two new people, but now it's a little more convoluted, and, and is there going to be some additional budget impact? You know, as an example, you're having to, to backfill some positions with a higher-paid person, or?
Yeah, no, we wouldn't have to backfill any position with a higher, a higher-paid person. We would, we would look at doing a recruitment to fill her position, that one individual, and then we would end up hiring a entry-level firefighter to fill that base position. So actually, we would end up saving money, because we would pay a lower-level person now to do that firefighter, as opposed to a more senior person who's currently doing it.
And then, you know, looking at all sides of this issue, after a year, if it doesn't pencil out, then what? You've kind of put one of your key people out on the edge of the diving board there.
Yeah, we, working with HR, we would have a, a one-year conditional job offer letter that would afford her the ability to bump back into her previous position, and everybody would just bump down. And that's why that newest firefighter being hired in would have to understand that this is potentially just a one-year position, and at the end of the one year, they could end up being laid off.
You know, not unlike people that are hired that's paid for by the safety levy.
Right, right, yeah.
If the safety levy isn't renewed, or it's reduced, they lose their job.
Correct.
We've had a pretty good record of not having that problem. Usually, too, there's a little bit of turnover, not a lot, but enough turnover that in years past, we hired a bunch of grant-funded firefighters who were always kind of on the bubble, and ended up never having to lay anybody off.
Correct, that's correct.
And there were like six of them.
Correct.
We've been pretty, pretty fortunate in, in being able to manage that.
Bessie, did you see a question?
As I say, what you said, Chief, at the beginning, how that, you know, you wish your people were here, so that they could hear about this exciting program. It's kind of like above and beyond the patient advocate that the hospitals have then, because, I mean, this is important, because unless people are in the system already all the time, you know, where they know where to go, like, our demographics are going up and stuff, and people don't know where to go.
Correct.
And so I hope this thing works, and I think they picked the greatest fire department to try it out.
I would agree.
All right.
Thank you.
Kind of looking over the fireside.
All right. What would you like to do with this item? There was actually revised one on your, on the dais that has the-
Which one is?
The yellow on it.
This one here. Get some of your frequent clients to remember getting one.
We've got so much paper, I don't know what time it'll be.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Council, we still have some more agenda items before we need that paramedic here for Wes.
I think I'm quite there yet.
If you, if you need confirmation, there are some in here.
I appreciate it. I'm doing okay right now.
Okay. Next is award a bid. This is for the Dave Clark Riverfront Trail lighting. This is on page 300, and we do have an ARA meeting after this, after the council meeting, so we're kind of awarding this ahead of time, but we will, we need to take action also at the ARA level, so don't forget, council, we have that meeting also.
Mayor?
Take care of, yeah.
I would move the staff requested action, subject to subsequent ARA budget appropriation.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Question, Stacy.
Stacy, good thing she came up.
The cost difference for the, for the contractor to furnish the lights rather than the city, it's probably right in front of me, but is it like the $4,330?
It is.
Okay. Interesting. Had a conversation with the salesman from Gray Bar, he was in the office today, and he was a little upset that the city was willing to, to pay more to have the contractor furnish the, the fixtures. And, you know, I explained, I thought, you know, both sides of the issue, that the city furnishes them, they accept the responsibility of having them here on time, and they're the correct ones, and they got to deal with any freight damage, or broken pieces, they, they accept the warranty, you know, six months from now, they're not working, the contractor says, I didn't furnish them, you know, that, that's up to you. So his numbers were, were quite a bit different. I mean, the, the 4,300 is very, very reasonable and justifiable, and, you know, in, in the family business that I grew up in, that we had several occasions to have this discussion, and I still remember my dad saying, you, you don't take two eggs into a restaurant and ask them to cook you breakfast for you. That's, that's-
That's right.
Kind of along the same vein.
There used to be a place in Corvallis, you did that.
Yeah, you brought your own steak.
Brought your own steak from the place next door.
So with that, I'll, I'll make a motion. Do we have a motion?
Already done.
Any more discussion?
Oh, no.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Next is on page three oh three. This one is for the whole slate of our annual appointments to boards and commissions. So, we have all that out. I think there's still, I have a couple left, but almost everybody that did apply have been able to find a slot for them. So...
I did have one constituent ask me. He said, well, if I get approved, what happens next? And I said, well, I'm going to presume that after the vote, somebody will contact you and give you the rest of the details.
There's, there's always a big, you know, all the, all the letters will be sent out immediately. And that's what poor Holly will be working on probably tomorrow. She'll be starting. And then, we get a letter sent out to everyone that they've been appointed.
I do have two appointees that'll be coming later. I mean, they've been selected. One of them was based on our decision tonight on the Human Relations Commission.
Okay.
The other one's Airport Commission, that I think Laura maybe sent the information to my appointee today. So, it'll be coming back.
Yeah. And I have, I have one more coming also because I wasn't sure about a reappointment because she's turned out for the human relations or if I have to get a new one.
Yeah. And I still have three that'll be coming. So...
I would move approval of the appointments on page three oh three and three oh four.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay.
My appointees keep staying on, staying on, staying on, staying. I never get a chance to appoint anyone.
Well, that's good.
You appoint the good ones from the start.
Yeah, you got good ones.
You don't have to keep them.
Yeah. Nice to see that retired Chief Creighton's back in the community.
I know. You know what? When I saw him, what was it? Someone's retirement. Mike, yeah. And I saw Kevin, and he said that they had just moved back within the month before. And then, I asked him if he'd like to, you know, get involved, you know, with the city. And then, when I had this appointment come up, perfect, I got ahold of him. It was, it was actually the day before the deadline for submitting it. So...
Nice to have him back.
I know. Isn't it? So, yeah, I was really excited about that. Okay. Next is the council audit committee. So, let's see. There's Sue Folden, myself, Bessie, and Ray are on the committee. And Sue and I are up for, our terms are expiring. So, the council has to appoint, reappoint, or if you wanted to point others. So, need a motion on that one.
I would move that we just reappoint.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. And that committee, I think, Ray, what do we do? We meet about once a year. So, it's not a big demanding.
Yeah.
Okay. Next is our Hospital Facility Authority Committee, the committee that goes nowhere. The one, so actually, Bill, you're on it, and Colleen Keller. And so, how many times have you met, Bill?
None.
It hasn't met in my ten, you know, I'm retiring.
I've never seen it meet.
I'd be happy to continue to serve, but it says here I can't.
This is the least demanding committee we have in the, with the city. But...
Why do we still have it around then if it's, if it's not functional?
I know. It comes up every, every time we do reappointments. It's because it's sort of there in case the hospital does some sort of, needs some sort of bonding. Mennonite Village member, they kind of were kind of having it, wanted it around in case they had something. It's just...
They run their bonding request through us, and we basically wheel their request.
But you know what? I wonder now, since we have the debt measure, if that actually...
Well, there's a couple of here are not eligible for reappointment. We can't just reappoint.
Right. I know. So, we have to, but can we actually do that now?
I nominate Ray.
Ten thirty at night, I wouldn't answer that question.
Something we need to check because then maybe we can get rid of the committee. Yeah. So, what we need is Bill and Colleen cannot be reappointed. So, we need two more people, which would be one counselor and then one budget committee member. So, we can just stick like maybe Will Summers on. And which counselor wants it?
Oh, I'll do it.
Okay.
I need more work. It's so labor-intensive.
Right. So, so we'll do Rich and Will Summers will say. He won't know because he won't need to know because they'll never be meeting.
I'll tell him the next budget meeting. He's right next to me.
Okay. Perfect. Okay. So, we need a motion to that.
So, yeah.
Okay. In a second. All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. Motion carried. That's it. And we took care of the report. So, we got business from the council.
Number four.
City Council.
Oh, no. City Council, or shoot, I just did the wrong one. City Council representative.
I don't have that.
Okay. That one's on page three thirty-one.
Move appointments on page three three one.
Okay. Second. Okay. And discussion?
Do I need to come to some of those meetings? I have not been to one. You need to come to learn the background because it's getting very convoluted. Thank you. When's the next one? I don't know, but I'll tell you. There are some public information meetings coming very soon. One held in the library next week in the North Albany Fire Station. There's a community outreach meeting about ODOT's regional plans.
The library, there's one in the library in the noon hour.
Right.
Next Thursday.
No, tomorrow, isn't it? There's a week from tomorrow.
No, it's tomorrow. You're right.
But that's the same time as the Y. But there's an identical meeting to be held in Station fourteen, I think, the following week. Somebody send me that information again so I can have it on my calendar. Thank you. What we need to do is transmit this to the, our staff at the MPO so that Ray gets on the list and gets all the agenda material.
I can do that first. Ray, do you get this? Do you subscribe to City Bridges? It was in the last one. That the schedule of meetings was in the last issue of City Bridges. It's also been running in an ad in the Democrat Herald.
Okay.
Still, still.
So, we need a motion for, or we already have a motion. In a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. All right. Now, that took care of our agenda items. Business from the council. And Rich, do you have anything?
Yes.
Okay.
I was very happy to hear that there were a number of folks for the transient lodging tax committee of some pretty high caliber who have agreed to participate. I did also hear a rumor that there was a board member of one of the receiving people that was going to quit so they could be put on the committee. And that flies in the face of the idea that we have people who don't have an axe to grind. It's just wrong. I also, in speaking with other counselors, found that there was, there were people who didn't understand which thing we were voting on the other night when it came to the inside or outside of the city for, or you could or could not be. So, for that reason, I move that the transient lodging tax ad hoc committee be comprised of people who either live or work in Albany and for the last six months have not been an employee or a board member of any organization that either receives or collects, meaning the transient lodging tax receives or collects. The collects part would be pleased to us, that they collect it from. That is, that is my motion.
So, Rich, what you're saying is like if Leah would have quit her job or whatever for six months, she couldn't be on it. Okay.
I mean, it, it keeps people who, who have a passion for one thing. Because, I mean, what this is about is getting an outside view.
Yeah. Because I think that was misunderstood. I really do.
Well, the only thing is, and I think what this is being targeted for is, is going to be Dick's appointment. And I feel if, if she, if she wants to resign from being on a committee, then that's fine. But, you know, this, the whole makeup to this committee, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't think we're really getting enough folks that are even going to be having expertise in tourism.
Excuse me.
So...
There are people here who have more expertise when it comes to marketing than everybody at the dais and everybody back there put together three or four times over. There's a guy who ran a multi-billion dollar corporation. There are local business people, been in business for fifty years, a CFO of a, of a local company. I mean, these people are people who understand, looking at a ledger.
So, but I see nothing wrong with Dick's appointment, who used to be a city counselor, been very involved in our community, knows Albany, and I think would be a good, a good voice on that committee.
Yeah. Yeah. Secondly, you say, yes. She's been a city council person. She's been involved with our historic districts. She's been involved with our, here's a lot about Albany. So, I will very much object to her being railroaded off by changing the rules.
Is there a second?
I think we're out of, out of sequence. We ought to have a second to have the discussion.
Yeah. Well, I'll second it just to get the conversation going.
The first part of the motion, I'm the guilty person who was confused. Because the motion about residents, at the same time we're talking residents, we were talking or worked in. And I believe that the motion incorporated both, but apparently it did not. So, I think having somebody that both, either or both, lives and or works here, that has an area of expertise, it would be advantageous. I think we ought to have them eligible to be appointed.
And, you know, and I think, too, the way the makeup of the committee, I mean, and this is what the council decided, everybody can just appoint who they wanted to the committee. But I think if we start changing it where somebody's not liking who someone's appointing takes away really who we really want to have there as our voice, as representation. And I don't think that's a good path for us to start going down. Just because they found out who was being appointed, well, now let's change the rules. That's not right.
No. Found out why. Let's understand. This is a person who has a passion for one of the people who receive. It's no different than having a conflict of interest. Because is she going to never go see them again? Of course not. And when it's all over, she'll probably go back on their board. I mean, the idea is to have a nonpartisan or as much as you can get one. She is not nonpartisan.
Well, and then, and maybe the appoint everyone else's who's appointing is not. Maybe they have their own agenda, too. So, and that could, you know, we don't know. But I think, you know, everybody was given Monday to find somebody to appoint. And I think that should be just respected. Just respect who everyone is appointing. I don't agree with everyone else's appointees, but I'm not saying anything about it. I think we all just respect who's getting appointed. So, because that was the makeup of the committee.
Well, I think the final word is it's going, they're going to come back with a recommendation. And if there's all kinds of controversy about who we appointed and do we like them and are they going to be good and are they going to be bad, I think it may well be that the council will just say, well, the hell with the whole thing. Are they going to come back before the election next year?
I would think so.
Yeah, Ray?
I'm of two minds with this. I agree with Rich on one side of it. But I also believe that if the, however the scope of the committee is set up and what they're told that they're to do, kind of like the safety committee for the police and fire, how they're, how it's structured, having people with divergent views isn't going to cause irreparable harm because they're either going to have to come to some sort of consensus or, or a vote of, you know, X number to X number to come up with a recommendation. And again, it is only going to be a recommendation that's going to come back to us for final approval. It's not a fait accompli by what this committee comes up with. Hopefully, they're going to come up with some good outside ideas. And we're not going to be, we're not going to be attending those meetings, I don't believe. I don't think that's our purview.
That would be my intent.
Preferably not because we want them to have kind of an open forum amongst themselves to come back to us so they're not being pressured. So...
Well, if, if one has the ability to, to put a sleeper in there, why shouldn't everybody else?
Well, but they're only going to get one vote out of X number. I don't, it's like we have difference of opinions and we each get a vote. And I don't...
So, the motion's been made, which, Mary, do you want to repeat the motion?
Motion is that transient, that transient lod, it's late.
It's late.
The transient lodging tax ad hoc committee will be comprised of people who either live or work in Albany and for the last six months have not been employee or a board member of any organization that either receives or collects transient lodging tax.
Okay. All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Can we do a whole call vote, please?
Yep.
Bolson?
Noah to the motion.
Collins?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kellum?
Yes.
Kupczynski?
Yes.
Gilbert?
No.
That's four to two.
All right. Okay. With that, anything else, Rich?
That's it.
Okay. Ray?
Nothing.
Okay. Floyd?
Oh, no. Thank you.
Okay. Bessie?
No, nothing.
No? Dick?
Again, I was kicking myself, although I don't think we do it for public hearings. But back in the day, when Mr. Chief, ex-chief, Pepper was the chief, we came up with the idea that we ought to let people talk as long as they want to. Boy, did we take advantage of that.
Well, and there's no nice way to say stop.
I know.
It was a forage.
Next chief, you know, it's like...
And if you do it fifteen years down the road, remember this.
So, okay. I didn't have anything this evening that's late. And Wes, anything? Okay. Staff, have anything else? So, okay, we got ARA meeting. But with that, we do have a work session twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh. We also have...